All the village board trustees meeting August 29th to order.
President Langfeld.
Here.
Trustee Francois. Trustee Xander.
Trustee Paul Carlson.
Here.
Trustee Thucius.
Here.
Trustee Kettleboulder.
Here.
Trustee Broschus.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its every authority, public, official, and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're at the public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board on any issue. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. While the village board encourages input from residents, it may not discuss or act on any issue that is not duly noticed on the agenda. So let's.
We do, we do have one.
Okay.
Deborah Schultz, 2400 Ulealea Street, and regarding traffic and safety on that corner.
So I live at the corner of Ulealea and Lewis. I brought this up to the board probably last year, but it was under different circumstances. At the time, I addressed some, for some change, because I had witnessed a front car-on-car collision at my corner. But then it, as time goes on, I keep on seeing all these cars come whipping down off of Main Street. I don't know if they're trying to get around where the two lanes join as one going down 14 or on Main Street. But they turned down Ulealea and they whip down around and they go down Lewis and then they take a left at the stop sign. So they're avoiding something. But a lot of them come really fast and I've even seen our post office trucks, drivers whipping down our street like a bat out of hell, excuse my mouth, but especially on Saturdays. And a lot of the times, so I have a special needs daughter who I push in a stroller. We, if you've ever seen our corner, Pauline, my neighbor across the street, has two, maybe, yeah, two, at least two big green arborvitae's that are probably 10 feet tall, that blocks any vision from Lewis to Ulealea and Lu- Ulealea to Lewis. So they're like right here in the corner. So you can't see when oncoming traffic is coming. And I can only, I'm sure that you guys can imagine how hard that is to walk or push a daughter in a stroller, even nonetheless bikers even, or anybody walking down either one of those streets to come around the corner and then eventually it's going to be bad. You know, my, my daughter has respite care during the day. Sandy Buss comes and spends some time with her during the day and I was very sad to hear that they almost got hit the other day. She said that she was walking down Ulealea and luckily she was walking down this side of the street, down Ulealea on the right-hand side of the street because if she would have been over on the other side, she would have definitely gotten hit by some big white truck. So I, you know, I don't have a, a resolution for this. I thought maybe a stop sign, but something needs to be changed for the safety of everybody because it's not just my family, it's everybody. I mean, there's a lot of people that walk down that street, those streets. So speed bump stop sign, something trapped on the trees. I don't know.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
That's it.
That's it? All right. Consent agenda, do I have, upon request, any trustee, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration under general business. Does anybody want anything removed?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? All right, I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Do I have any discussion?
Yes. So under the number two, total disbursements, I sent Bill an email.
You sent who? Pardon? Who did you send an email? Oh, Bill, okay.
Yeah, he's got a document I want to show you guys I put together.
I may know which one.
It'd be the COVID's, the COVID-19 one. Yep, so if you look at all the refunds that we've had, that we've had just for this last pay period, or last month, we've given out $8,678.75 in refunds for, for COVID-19. I'm not disputing the refunds. I'm just making sure that we're all aware that, you know, the revenue that we're losing because of COVID and because of things that we're doing, I just, that's all I wanted to show was that. Because it, as I was going through the ledger, I was seeing, man, there's a lot of COVID refunds going on in the ledger. There's a lot of them. So I did my magic and pulled that out directly from the, from the document and that's, that's what I saw, just for one month, was $8,678.75. So again, I'm not disputing the number at all. I just want to make everyone aware. As we talked about budget stuff, you know, some of the things that we need to be aware. That's all, that was the only comment I really had about that.
Okay, I thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, so moved. Okay, we're at report of village officers, village president, I'll, I'll be short, there's two things. As you know, we had a meeting on well three, we met down there in the neighborhood. It was well attended, 32 people showed up. I thought it was good discussion. We ended up getting some good feedback that we're going to take back and come up with a few other options to look at and for them to comment on. So that went well. I want to thank Town and Country and everybody that worked on that. That went well. We had a beautiful night, too. And number two is we had a meeting with MG&E. It was Michael, Administrator Chang, myself and a couple representatives from MG&E. I'm not going to, it was a two-hour meeting, so I'm not going to bore you with all the little facts when we talked about pricing and all that good stuff, but what came out of it is currently there's only really one model of LED light fixture. That model you can either get with two LED plates or one, and obviously at already and we have two. But MG&E is looking at other vendors and they're set, having the vendors send in these different model heads that we offered and they agreed that they'll going to install them on Evergreens, a couple of the models on Evergreen, you know, between the middle school and the park. So we'll be able to look at them and obviously MG&E will do their study and stuff on them. But it'll give us an opportunity to look at the different LEDs and give comment on, maybe there's a better lamp for people and who knows, it may bring in a few people from other communities that'll want to look at the different styles because right now MG&E only offers one. So you may see the truck putting up some lamps, replacing the ones there and that's just so, we're kind of a test site for them. That is all I have. Vice President? Okay, other trustees, Kevin?
Yeah, thank you. It was my pleasure to work with some great residents for the downtown parking task force, looking to satisfy along, an ongoing need for parking in the downtown area along Main Street, urban, P to market, roughly speaking. I'm not going to repeat what's in the report. You can all read the report, the public can read the report. We've got some summary of our results and happy to say that some of those have already started taking shape, including some additional parking behind the old fire station to access Xander Community Nature Park. I thank Mike and his crew for getting that going right away. And, and some recommendations and you can read through the recommendations as well. I understand we'll be discussing this a little bit further later in the meeting, so I'll save the details until that point.
All right, thank you. Administrator?
Yeah, so three updates here. One, a reminder that, that the village does sit on the board for the gateway to the Deerless area. We did meet on July 29th and the main topic there was to discuss the regional trail planning for a regional trail between Reedsburg and Middleton via the Devil's Lake corridor. As part of that, Dane County and Salt County, along with UW Extension, are, will be working on an economic feasibility study of the public proposed trail and its potential impact on communities along the road. It is intended to be completed in the fall of this year and as a part of that, at the next meeting with the gateway, they will be doing a Zoom conference call with the Rock River Trail in Minnesota, southwest Minnesota, I believe. And that is on April 31st at 1:00 PM. Also, in regards to gateway to the Deerless area, they are setting up a September, mid-September meeting to discuss with the Regional Planning Commission, how to better plan the economic vitality of Black Earth Creek Valley and some of the things that they're working on include, but not, not limited to remote workspaces, transportation via trails, housing, business, resources and recreation. And then how municipalities within the valley can complement each other. The second update here in regards to Brewery Road and North Hill Point Road, we did have a discussion with the town of Berry in early June in regards to a jurisdictional transfer of both roads or both sections of road. And the instruction from the town of Berry was that they would they would require a memo from the village in regards to the potential impact of the creation of potentially a town island or the annexation on town residents. And then they wanted to see a draft agreement of the jurisdictional transfer agreement. And so we've prepared that. We will be presenting that to, staff has prepared them and we'll be presenting that to the town of Berry come September, so you may hear something about that. Third is in regards to the UW clinic. We've had some questions in regards to whether or not the clinic would be permanent closing or not. And I've reached out to UW and was able to get into contact with a doctor newcomer. He is the chief clinical officer with the UW Health Clinics and reports directly to the CEO. My understanding is that there will be no major decisions made in regards to the clinic here in Cross Plains until after the flu season. Major reason why the clinic has not reopened yet at this point is due to staffing levels and shortages and anticipation of support to the hospital. And so that's the most recent, at least message that I've received from the UW flags. I did inform them that they are important, so important role in our community. And so any future decisions that is made with that clinic, that we be involved with that. That's it for me.
All right, thank you very much. All right, other reports? I see Sustainability Committee did a year-end review report. Mike, would you want to say anything about Paul? John's going to do it.
Okay. I didn't see him get back.
Yeah, we have John Burand from the Sustainability Committee to provide a.
So I believe we wrote a report that was much more detailed than this that got sent out, but this is just a very much a summary of what is, what has occurred over the last year. The Sustainability Committee, as most of you probably know, is created by the village board in August of 2019. And to summarize, our mission is to guide and assist Cross Plains residents, businesses and government in becoming a community that meets the needs of today without compromising the needs of the future. And our goal is to identify and advocate for changes related to environmental stewardship, creating a more sustainable village. Our summary of work to date. Early on, we did some research on residential solar, made a suggestion, and I believe we are helped, we helped facilitate solar and new developments. We have been obtaining, we have taken a survey and obtained community input on the village sustainability efforts. We are exploring the potential of solar energy in Cross Plains. And we have worked with, and on outreach and collaboration with neighboring communities, specifically Middleton and then the, I always forget what they're called, but it's basically Black Earth and Mezzo, the Vermont Township Group. To summarize the survey, we broke it down into a couple different pieces, major pieces, is the way the answers came to us. The first us, I'm going to touch this on is water. Our respondents would like to see policies that meet the demand of future weather events. That was almost 71% of the people in town. The respondents also would like to implement water management methods that restore or mimic the natural water cycle, and that was close to 66%. The next area was energy. There's a desire for renewable energy for both village operations, 71.6% and homeowners, which is also 71.6%, 71.6%. 44.2% of respondents were willing to pay additional taxes to reduce carbon input. But it is worth pointing out that 52.9 were not willing to pay additional taxes to reduce carbon input. In the solid waste area, the survey reflected a positive response to the village selling compost bins at a discount and provided instructions on how to compost. That was 65% of the respondents. And there were also desires expressed for a recycling center, an expanded recycling program and a verification that recyclables were being recycled properly. Then we were in transportation and land use and this was, we didn't ask specific questions that way, but this is how we kind of got answers. There is a need for a bike path to Middleton, that was expressed, 53%, and a possible bus shuttle service at 45% of the respondents. And the survey did not specifically ask about land use, but many responses dealt with the interconnectivity of water, landscaping and yard waste. And then we had additional comments. And these were, there was a, you could just comment on the survey and it didn't have anything to do with the questions that we specifically asked. But this is what was provided. They're reducing light pollution, light trespass and street lighting in the village. A desire not to build structures in Xander Park. The need to reduce consolidate village buildings, an audit of public works and the cleanup of the pots in parking lots.
The what?
The pots in parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Looking forward as, as, as of what the Sustainability is, Committee is, is looking at. We're going to continue in a research and advisory capacity to the village board. We're going to develop a sustainability plan. We're going to continue to investigate citing a solar farm in or near Cross Plains to offset the village energy needs. We're going to continue to develop relationships with communities in western Dane County. We're going to deliver information about sustainability resources and initiatives for Cross Plains residents through the village website. We're going to seek opportunities to interact with Cross Plains residents, to hear their concerns and gather information from meaningful initiatives. And we're continued to research opportunities for development grants and funding for village sustainability initiatives. And then we're, we're going to make some recommendations to the village board. Support the Sustainability Committee's development of a sustainability plan. Incorporate sustainability principles into planning and decision-making. Support citing of a solar farm in or near Cross Plains to offset the village's energy needs. Coactively plan to mitigate the effects of climate change with a focus on preventing damage from stormwater runoff and continue to support our local recreational resources such as the Ice Age Trail and Black Earth Creek. And Kevin didn't make us write that last one. That's what we have. Thank you. Do you have any questions? I will do so. Thank you.
All right, we have.
Good evening. How are you guys? Good. So I just wanted to report on a couple of things. We've been extremely busy, over 200 calls just this month alone. For whatever reason, we've been really, really busy. We're all still healthy. We're not having any issues with, with the exception of the occasional headache. Other than that, we're doing well. I'm sure most of you have heard about our, our big case that happened over the past week. We ended up with three burglaries and five thefts. I ended up taking the lead on this case and assigning it all to myself. We were able to make some arrests and we were able to recover about 80% of the property already. We're still working as part of a, kind of a mini task force, if you will, because they hit so many other areas. So we're still kind of in the working process in that case. We've identified two people, but we know there's at least two more on the loose, possibly three. Those people have not been identified as of yet. We think we have a third one identified, but we can't be positive just yet. So we're still kind of working through it. The, the video that has surfaced and it's been all over doesn't, didn't give us much for identity. So we're working through other ways of evidence collection and DNAs and those kind of things. So those will take some time to keep working through them. Do you guys have any questions of that case specifically? Seventeen and eighteen. Very, very young. And, and that's happening in, just a caveat, this is, this is just one little itsy-bitsy cell. There, it's every night. Actually, the next night, other community got hit. I mean, it's happening every, everywhere. We're actually lucky to have resolved ours because most places they don't, they can't find them. I mean, they, the, the best way to, to curb that is to actually just prevent it from happening. We have video of them touching dozens of vehicles. They just grab them as soon as they're locked, they move on. So if we harden our targets, then they kind of just move on. So the, the situation here was that they were able to get into cars that were unlocked and garage doors and those kind of things. Yes, Mike?
I was just going to ask, you said other communities. How many other can you name them?
Just about.
Garland, Oregon, Madison, Pittsburgh.
Every.
Blue, Shorewood. This is like the same group of people?
There's different cells. So it's, it's. Yeah, I mean, it's. What has changed is the age demographics. So in just, I, you know, my 25 years of policing, we used to get them where they were more in the twenties, but now they're getting as young as 12, 13, 14 years old. Some of those groups though recruit those ages because what happens there is that if they get caught, it's a lot less punishment than if for a 25. Usually they're already carrying some other baggage behind them. So makes things a little more difficult. So they recruit these younger kids who are more agile, can run, get away from us real quick. So but we're doing the best we can. Anybody else have any other? I thought I'd come here just to answer questions about this call. Right now, I'm really, really working on just community wellness because this, you know, the property, we, we lost $1,200 in property total. That's out of all the cases. So it's not a whole lot, we're not talking a lot of money, but what you do lose is your sense of safety, your sense of peace that affects that whole block. We have three children who were, happened to be outside when this was all happening. So I mean, the community wellness piece is far more reaching than $1,200. So that's kind of what I'm working on now and just working with, trying to piece the community back together and and work with, through the relationships and, and work on, on just being well as a community. Yeah, Bill.
So from the, from the reports I heard, the owner or the homeowner discharged the weapon, hit him, shot, said he shot at the air.
Yeah.
And then the other people shot back.
We're, we're not sure that they shot back. I, I think that they may have shot just to let him know that, that they had a weapon too. And, and that's highly controversial and I, and we've dealt with that as well. You know, him shooting and them shooting and all, all of that. And although that, I mean, it's against village ordinance, it's unsafe, it's endangerment, and there's all kinds of things. You could go on either side of that coin. However, I always kind of think of things as things happen for a reason. I can tell you that had that exchange not happened, they would have continued to victimize until something like that happens. Somebody would have got hurt or something. With, with the actual knowing that they had a weapon, they went right to the top of the list and within, I'm going to say six hours, they were in custody. So that, that turned up the heat on them and, and all the agencies. That's one thing I'm really proud of with this county. Dane County's law enforcement is phenomenal when it comes to working together. So I mean, it wasn't, Pittsburgh was on it, Wanakee was on it, Dane County Sheriff's, we were all on it at one time. It just became a focal point for all of us. And within six hours, they were in custody. And we've recovered the vehicle they used. And in the vehicle were all, a lot of our property that connected them to town. So it was just a really awesome effort that way. Yeah. More question? That's, no, that's it.
Thank you very much for coming in.
The only thing else I want to just mention is we're trying to get people away from using social media to report things. We're getting a lot of reports of crime or, or active cases that they send us either via Facebook or via our webpage. It just, it's not timely. And then when we do receive the complaint, we have to go back to the people and, and fill in all the gaps of what happened. And so we're really working toward that. That is something new. This community, it's a small community, so they're used to having it very personable. But in this day and age where these kind of things are happening all the time, we need information rapidly, quickly. It gives us the opportunity to actually catch people. So we're really going to work on that and I ask that you guys support that because you will be hearing about it. It's not the run-of-the-mill, small-town way of doing things, but we're so close to Madison that we have to almost mirror a lot of what happens there. We need to have, you know, quick information to actually figure things out and give us a fighting chance. So we've received some complaints that have gone unanswered for a day. And by then it's, it's too late. You know, it really just, I mean, it doesn't give us a chance. So that's something up and coming. I'm going to, I'm going to do something in our newsletter, but you guys will hear about it. So if you could please support it just for people to call us on those complaints. Yes, Lori?
I wonder if you could just give like safety. I know some of these people ran after these kids.
Yeah.
Unbeknown that they had guns. Do you have any other safety tips?
Yeah, we will definitely be doing that in the newsletter and some of you probably saw Channel 27 was here and I mentioned it there as well. I mean, we don't, that's just not good. I mean, I don't think that the people that did chase them out, if they would have known they had a gun, I doubt they would have chased them. But, but it is a good reminder. I think what happens is small towns feel like we got this, we'll take care of it. And we're not dealing with, with your local youths that were raised here. We're dealing with people from wherever. And so it's just different. And, and carrying a gun is quite normal. As I left the office, there was a group of young men shooting in Madison. Multiple shots fired, people headed, I mean, it's happening every day, all the time. So it's scary. So any other questions? Otherwise, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. We'll go to general business. The first one is discuss, discussion regarding village.
The first one is discuss, discussion regarding village COVID-19 response. I placed this on the agenda because at the last staff meeting, we kind of talked about it. What our philosophy was going into this. We're now starting into the fall and winter season and there's obviously been some cancellations of event. So they just wanted to make sure the board is still behind that we are going to continue to do business within the guidelines that are set out. So, you know, things may not look exactly the same, you know, let's just take a, a certain event. We may not be able to do it like we've done it in the past, but we want to continue to at least try to do things in a, in a safe way. So they kind of just want to make sure the board is still supportive of, of working and trying to keep the village moving forward even, obviously taking into consideration the requirements from the health. So are there, is that pretty much what everybody's still feeling, that we're keeping the same philosophy?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. So if you, Bill, can pass that on to them, that, that's research. Okay, number two, discussion and possible action.
I, can we go back to?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so we had received an email from a village residence stating that, about the emergency order number nine.
Yep.
Think everyone got that? And I kind of reached, well, I did reach out to Bill, wondering if we as a village can help get the parochial private schools going anyway to back them. Is that something that we can do? And you know, the, the private schools, I mean, I reached out to them to see and just to read what they've all done and they're smaller scale. And I guess I'm seeing that these parents, teachers, they have kids who, they want to be at school. And what better way to start with a smaller school to see, well, can our larger schools fit?
I, I don't want to go too much because that's really a different topic. I think we can put that on the agenda if we want. It would be the discussion on the rule nine. But I don't, we, I think that'll get a lot of interest from the community and here. So we can't do it because we really didn't notice it. So I, I'm more than happy that we can put that on the future item if, if, you know, if it's still applicable when it gets to our next meeting. But I don't want to discuss it here because it's not noticed. And I think there'll be people on both sides of that. All right, anything else on COVID-19? I'm sorry, I jumped ahead on that. All right, next one is discussion and possible action regarding the 2020 census. I put that on also. If you're aware that they've shortened, you know, the census, wanted to go through April. It was originally scheduled to end, end of October. The federal government now has pushed it back to the end of September. We're at 81% right now. And my thought on, on this was, we know from past data and historical data that one of the areas that there's less of response is apartment, people who live in apartment buildings. So I'm wondering if people think it's worth, if we can get the landlords, permission from the landlords, we go through and put the doorknob reminders to do it at, in our apartment buildings. I certainly would volunteer to walk the buildings to do that. You know, I think, you know, a little bit of time might help us with that. I mean, it's kind of free money if you think about it. So I'm, I'm bouncing that out and if anybody has any other ideas, clearly I'll put it into my newsletter and we'll put it into the newsletter again. But, you know, we're at 81%, so we're moving, but it certainly would be nice to get in the 90s. So what are people's thoughts, Bill?
Aren't the census workers supposed to be coming out, going door-to-door to those people that didn't fill out their census?
They are, but if you do the reading, they're, they're short people. They've raised the hourly rate to 30 bucks an hour. And they're still having a difficult time filling spots. I think people don't want to go door-to-door during these times. So I don't know what it is, but to me, like I say, I know I can hit a lot of, I can hit the main apartment buildings in probably three hours and I need the steps anyway. So. And it's not any contact, it's just putting, you know, the little door hangers on, you know. But you're right, they're supposed to be out there, but they're having a shortage of, and I don't know what zones are having a shortage, and they've shortened it by 30 days.
Right.
And if you're looking at 81%, we still, that's seven, eight, close to seven, 800 people. Even if you add workers here, that's a lot of doors to be knocking. It's just a thought.
What about like nursing homes and, and?
They're doing it, they have done it where the nursing home actually does the report.
Okay.
Themselves.
Okay.
And the students are doing the same thing. So that, that's kind of why I'm thinking apartment, you know, you have basically the areas are apartment, people who live in apartments, seniors, military and college students are kind of the upper group that have the, the lowest response. Sure. What are people's thoughts?
I'm willing to watch it, you know it.
Okay.
I would help do that too.
All right. So Bill, maybe I will stop by and we can maybe do a plan?
Yeah, we can get any kind of material you, you want.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. If you guys could be responsible and maybe even if one of your staff could make phone calls to make sure landlords are okay with it. I think it's worth, like I said, I think it's worth the, the time. All right, anything else on, on that that anybody wants to talk about? All right, discussion regarding the Cross Plains Area Chamber of Commerce. Judy, you just must, you wanted it on?
Yep, I did. So at the moment, the village still owes, kind of, that we voted on, owes about 15,000 yet to the chamber. And with Tara leaving, we don't have a person. So I'm wondering, rather than them even paying the chamber some of it, we only get half of our dues this year, so we are down. I don't know what we would have done should the state actually tell you the truth, because we don't have the dues. But I feel like the chamber is very important to our community and we still need to keep something going. So I don't know if we have any staff members that can kind of help us with COVID if they're not as busy doing other things, or I don't know if there's anything we can do to have the village kind of try to help us get the chamber going until we get back on our feet, until we decide what we can really do if we can, or, because at this moment, we cannot hire again.
Right. So are you suggesting some of the money that we would be paying the, the chamber, we might be able to pay somewhat extra hours?
Right.
To do chambers work?
Right.
Is that what I'm hearing as a proposal?
And I think just to get us through, if we could just do some email blasts, like Tara's really good about doing email blasts constantly. And I'm not saying they need to do that very often. We don't have any events after the golf outing. We don't have any events really going on, so it's not like that. But it's just to keep people aware that the chamber, because I know she gets a lot of calls about everything. So I don't know if we want somebody filtering in for that, but if we could have like a blast about who is a chamber member, like Kelstra's Garage is a chamber member or something like that, to try to keep our businesses still notify or still, you know, add for them or something like that. I don't know. I mean, if they could talk to Tara also, we could get someone.
Bill, so how come they, how come they won't hire?
We don't have the money. We won't have the money. We only get half of our dues.
Oh, okay.
So like, and we really cut our dues this year. Like the bank usually pays like, I think it was 2,500. And this year we did it by, by people and we only had to pay 700 because we're thinking, because we don't have the events. So we didn't feel like it was worth targeting them, you know, 2,500. And we don't have the, you know, and we don't have a lot of, the only event we're having this year is golf. And we share that with Northwest Dane. So not all of that comes to us anyways, you know, that's half.
Right, okay.
So we don't, you know, we didn't have the chicken barbecue, we didn't have trout days. We just didn't have enough to have the events. And I think a lot of people, you know, are with the COVID, they're not paying their dues, which I totally understand because they're not making the money that they normally make either, even though it's a lot less money. Yeah, it's, yeah. But Tara's willing to help.
Calvin?
Yeah, has the board had a chance to meet since Tara's announcement?
Yes, we met once, we're meeting again on Wednesday morning at 8 o'clock, but they wanted to see how we feel before they meet again. Yeah.
I'm just curious to know what, get your brains together. It sounds like you already have one meeting, maybe the second one will turn up something else. And I'm really curious what the board thinks, where, what direction, not just the end of this year, but beyond this year, where they want to go.
Right. We, I mean, we would love ideally to have another Tara, but I mean, I don't. At this moment, we can't afford to have another Tara, right, for one thing. I mean, that is what the thing is, but we don't want it to, we don't want to let it just go null and void. We don't want to let it just fry up either.
Yeah.
I think it's important for our community to have such a thing. And that if, if we could have the village help us like get through the COVID and then maybe look at hiring and then if we can get our dues back up and then have events. I mean, at the moment, we'd like to say we don't have events. But Tara does a great job. She does a great job, so.
Anybody else have questions for Judy or feelings on that? Sarah?
I guess I hear a lot, as I'm sure others do, in the community, a lot of complaints from residents, like why won't any businesses come here? And I don't know, I just want to suggest that perhaps there's other barriers that we should be addressing other than the chamber, relying on the chamber to draw businesses to our village because A, it hasn't been that successful. And B, it seems evident that even with a strong chamber lead like Tara, we're still not drawing businesses in and still having all these empty, you know, what are the other barriers to drawing business here other than relying on small chamber of commerce organizations? So just to bring up that perhaps we should look at other ways, other barriers to overcome.
I guess what I would ask is when you meet next, you actually kind of put out what you think would be the important tasks that need to be done that, you know, a village staff person could do. And I would assume that when you do this, that they don't have the inner working of the, of the chamber. So there's got to be contact people that give them the information and then they put to work. So I think what we need, I think, at least for me, is a little bit more. I'm for helping out, you know, because I think we need to try to keep it alive. But I guess I, instead of this group trying to come up with the tasks are and the objectives, is what does the chamber absolutely need from this person to keep going? And what do you think the hour commitment would be and that type of stuff? And then I guess we have a little bit more to work on that. Calvin?
Yeah, thanks, Judy. That was what I was, I was going in that same direction. I think there's sort of the short-term triage, what could you now? But then the longer term, which I think Sarah touched on, which is the chamber or an economic development or a tourism, you know, committee. So like there's sort of those three overlapping, sort of married or somewhat married, uh, uh, areas of interest. You know, what does the future look like? So that's the long-term question. What does next year or the year after look like? And I think that, that does deserve a little bit of, of thought, you know, before you just jump back into Tara too.
Right. No, and I do agree with that because we just don't know how long COVID's really going to take. And we don't know how long before our businesses really start giving money to the chamber again.
Are you okay with that, Judy? Is that kind of what you were looking for?
On Wednesday morning at 8 o'clock. And that's what they were, just want to know how you guys felt about it.
Is that, everybody okay with that? All right, let's go to number four, discussion and possible action regarding the rental of the municipal pool to the Madison Aquatic Club.
All right, good evening. Appreciate your time. Appreciate you already extending the season one time. Since that date, I have been in discussion with Madison Aquatics Club about the possibility of extending their season. To do so, put together a budget for your viewing for this evening that discusses what some of our expenses are based on what the revenue we can expect from Madison Aquatics Club. My recommendation, if we were to go forward with this, is that we aren't open to the public, but we are open to private clubs if they'd like to rent that facility. How this came about is that most of our private clubs or private clubs within our area are unable to use any indoor space moving forward due to COVID-19. Since our facility is up and running, especially with MAC using it for the summer, it's been very successful. They've been very professional about the COVID aspect and also all their participants. And I looked at a way that we could possibly bring in more revenue due to the shortage that we have for 2020. So as you notice, there's about a $6,700 increase in the revenue aspect, even compared to the expense side of things. So it's a, a positive for the village in regards to being able to bring in more revenue, exercise everything that's currently still going within our facility use agreement. Be more of a rental though to MAC for their use within the facility. In the facility use agreement, I have asked them to pay for it all upfront. Bill had brought that up saying, you know, let's have them pay upfront. That way we're not trying to chase down the money at the end of the year if there's any issues. And then if we were to close early on them, we would be refunding them for money that they've already paid. But you had already paid, or they had already paid for the use of the facility. And they seem to be okay with that without any issues. The only thing I'm trying to still work out is their timing. Obviously, there's a, they, being a private club, they have a number of people in different school districts. So they're not really sure, you know, what kids are going to be at what time. They have thrown out a survey to all of their participants to ask what times would be best for them. The way that I've illustrated the budget, it was based off of six hours per day and during the week and four hour, four hours during the day on weekends. So four, four hours on Saturday, four hours on Sunday. That's at a minimum. That's them guaranteeing us whether it rains, snows to this point. Hopefully that doesn't happen, but they're guaranteeing us that rental fee, rain or shine, so.
All right, do I have a motion to accept a rental agreement with Madison Aquatic Club?
So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so I have a motion in the second to accept the rental agreement with the Madison Aquatic Club to use the municipal pool. Any discussion? Bill?
All right, if you can, Bill, if you can pull up the net, uh, pool net. So my understanding from reading through the, the agreement was that one, it would be a minimum of $300 a day.
$360.
No, that's not what the contract says. But it said 300 is the minimum.
The hours that they would, would have?
Would be, would be six hours, right, which is $60 an hour. But I could have sworn I read in here that it was a minimum of $300 per day.
Yeah, it's on page 78.
Page one of my memo states, states here. So the, the actual agreement itself may need a change, the memo, let's say 300, Bill?
Yeah.
Because that's what they, oh, yeah.
Under, 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 under consideration.
Yeah, so six hours and, and you are right, that's, that's a typo. So it'd be 360.
Okay. So what I did is I went through and, and, oh, then the refund, it looked like they were getting a refund for days that they weren't using.
Only if we were to close on them. So if we, so if, if we look out and we notice that we're going to have a few days in a row of 38 degrees or 35 degrees or 45 degrees, we're going to, we're going to close our facility on that because we're going to need time to winterize. But if we have them pay all the way through October 18th, we would refund them to the date that we closed, that we told them they could no longer use our facility to that date, not any day prior to that, that they did not use.
Because that didn't seem clear under the contract. So what I did is I ran through numbers of, of whether they use six days or five hours, if they went to the minimum, which was five, basically five hours a day instead of six hours a day. And then I also looked at what weather from last year, last couple of years. And there's an average of about nine rainy days, if you will. And the way I read the contract was we were going to refund on rainy days.
No, absolutely not. I told them the only way we could, we'd be able to stay open is for them to pay for even days that they weren't able to use due to weather issues. And they were okay with that.
So, so, so the contract can be updated to say a minimum of 360 per day?
Okay, can, can I, you're not reading that contract because actually that section needs to be updated. But it's. But it says before September 8th. So this contract, the $300 minimum is by before September 8th.
Correct.
So that's the old, I mean, that, that's where the difference is. If you go to the top, it's the 360 because it's a minimum of six hours at 60. And what you just have to do is number two has to just be updated all along to October 18th and then the new rate. So that, that's why it says 8th, because that was under the old one.
Right, so it should say 360 up to October 18th.
Correct.
Correct, so it goes September 8th through the 18th, 360 a day.
Yes, yeah, that's where the. Or, I mean, down the next number three, you could just change that to, that August 24th because that was originally when we were going to close, but we extended it to September.
Right.
So you, you can modify that to September 8th too. It just needs to be updated.
All right, so the net of 41 days of six hours is about 67, $6,800.
That's, that's six hours per day though on weekdays and four hours per day on weekends. So you're not reading that correctly. It's not, it's.
It's 38, it's 38 hours a week.
Correct.
Five times six is 30, then eight. So it's $38, 38 hours times 60 is what it is per week.
Correct.
So 20, no, that doesn't right. 2200, 2280?
That one I can't do right.
Well, it's only three.
It is, it's.
Thirty-eight times.
Thirty-eight times 60 is 2280.
There you go. That's what it is per week.
But that, but that's, that's gross, right? But we're talking net, which is fine because, I mean, it's still a profit, right? Still 6,000, I mean, if we go $360 per, basically we're talking, according to Mike's numbers, 14,760.
So look at this sheet here, Bill.
I, I know, I know, I know, and I, I pulled your numbers off of that. So if you look at 246 hours, the 60 hour, $60 an hour, that's 14,760.
Correct, that's what I have down on my budget sheet.
Exactly, but then you also have additional expenses of $7,995.
Correct.
So you have a total net of $6,765.
Which is right on here.
Right, right, exactly right. So that's what I wanted to confirm. All the other stuff that I worked out is really null and void because of, you're not taking away, because it's six hours, not five hours, and you're not, you're not refunding for days of weather.
No, only if we close.
Only if.
And then if we close, we obviously don't incur any of these excess expenses either. So the expense side would go down as well.
Totally agree, yeah, okay, so I'm fine with that. That's, that was what I wanted to show you guys. From how I interpreted.
All right, Michael?
You say if you close, what are the conditions for closing? Like you said, the winter, as you said, there's so many days under a temperature, then the pool is done, like you have to shut it down.
Yeah, and I don't expect it to, once we started in October, we're going to have, is they have to be looking a lot more closely to that. We need at least two full days to winterize. So looking out, you know, within our schedule, they wanted the 18th. I actually wanted it only to go through the end of September. They want it due to the, the way that they could schedule it out, they needed that much time. So I tried to say, okay, we can do that. And if it gets, you know, below 40 degrees or around 40 degrees, we will look to close at that time.
Is that like what your judgment is?
Yeah.
Below 40, you're like, okay, we gotta.
Yeah, I, I can't believe that anyone would get in the water anyways, so.
Maybe there might be like a warming, you know, if they have to over warming.
True, exactly, that's what we're hoping for. And if we're able to do that and stay open for it and bring in some revenue, that's, that's kind of why we're doing it.
Kevin?
Yeah, one, one thing not accounted for here and that would, would mean closing would be some sort of catastrophic breakdown of equipment.
Correct.
When it gets, when it gets, and so we are putting, there's some, some costs that are not in here, which is just the use of equipment to wear, tear on equipment that we replace and fix and come on a day over the years. I'm in favor of this. I just think we all need to realize that there's a risk of wear and tear down out here. And if there is a pretty big breakdown, are we actually going to fix it, you know, if there's two weeks left in their season?
Right, right. I, I put in the, or we had talked about it and put in the agreement, you know, for any reason that the village is, has to close. So it could be mechanical as well. We've had that happen in the past. If that were to happen, we'd obviously refund back money. There is, I did have maintenance in there at the original part of this. And I was thinking it's extending it. We've already, you know, more or less met our maintenance for the season. We're actually just looking to extend it. And it actually could help that part of it too, not have some of these breakdowns and things. When it gets cold at night, the vessel tends to break apart in different places, especially with the tiling in different parts. So keeping water in it isn't the worst thing either.
Any other?
One thing I would question, you, you did say with MAC, which I know that's on the agenda tonight. I have been in, trying to be in conversation with other teams as well to look for other ways. And if we were, that'd obviously increase the revenue aspect of things. Just making sure that you're okay with that, if we were to do that. We've put together the same type of information for the new team coming in. They would just get different times, obviously, so.
I, I'm all for it. I mean, we're heating the pool and it's, we're paying the same amount if it's being used or not. So I, I'm okay with that. I think it's a good opportunity. All right, anything else? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, so moved. All right, discussion and possible action to amend section 21.14 sub D sub 1 and 14.03 of the municipal code pertaining to enforcement and penalties and deposit schedule.
Do you want a presentation on this before a motion?
Yeah, why don't you, whoever is going to bring that up?
Yeah, so this was previously discussed, has a potential future agenda item or requested. This has to do with the fines, upping the fines for primarily dog owners, animal owners for fecal matter and leaving it and not picking up after themselves. So there is a maximum number, maximum penalty amount of $100. And then with that, there's a deposit schedule, pretty much fees that go with the penalty.
All right, do I have a motion?
You want a motion?
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? All right, I have a motion and a second to amend section 21.14 sub D sub 1 and section 14.03 of the municipal code. All right, any discussion? Bill?
So the only question I've gotten from a couple of residents is how is this going to be patrolled? I mean, right now, you know, we're seeing the problem is still pretty widespread. And I don't know if people are getting caught or they're not getting caught or just, you know, keep it going.
Yeah, well, I would hope people would call it in like anything else. I know I'm going to.
I see, I see the evidence, I don't think that.
Exactly.
Well, yeah, I, yeah, it's going to be where someone has to actually see it. And we're not going to do DNA or anything.
Right.
Oh, I didn't know we could grab the chief.
Oh.
Sometimes you know.
Chief, do you want to come up?
Yeah.
The, the question is, we're on the increase in the fines for dogs, the lack of cleaning up after the dog.
Yep.
The question is, do you, does, do you have to see it? Does the officer have to see it in person or can they take it, the word of someone else that has seen it and then calls it in?
Okay, so we would handle it like any, is it Sarah, your, your question?
I think it's kind of like.
Okay. So it would, whatever complaint we get, 90% of all complaints, we get them after the fact. So we would have to do an investigation. Obviously, we're not going to collect feces or whatever, but we're going to go and talk to people and find out who saw what. In today's world, people are making it a lot easier on us because they're taking pictures and video of what's going on. I just issued a citation just like that. Neighbor saw it. It's been an ongoing problem. They took a picture of it. I went and talked to the person, they admit to it. We had picture of it, issued a citation, you know, it. So, so that helps us do that. Now, if somebody, if it's word against word and, and we, we take their word for it, we can issue the citation with the caveat that when they gets to municipal court, they may have to testify. And then, then you'd have it that way. But normally that doesn't go to that far. Normally, we will resolve it one way or another. Very seldom, now, we've been taking a very strong look at these cases because we're getting so many complaints about them. We're not giving warnings. And the increase in fine just kind of gives a bigger sting. That's all it really does, so. There had to be some adjustments to chapter 14. And I think that the judge has to be involved in some of that and looking at ordinance the way it's written out. But I don't think there'll be a much issue with that, or Paul didn't think there would be, so.
Michael? I have a question. This is involving the second and subsequent offenses since it goes up to $100.
Yep.
Now, that is for the person walking the dog, not for the dog, right? So if a different member of the family is doing it, then each one gets a first offense?
What we try to do is find out who the dog owner is. That's who's responsible for it. So we, so we had a, like, for instance, we had a dog bite, a pretty, pretty significant one. Children were with the dog, the dog got away, bit somebody across the street, attacked the dog. We, we talked to the owner. So if you're, if you're the parent and you're allowing this dog to be with those, you're not going to write tickets to 12 and 13-year-olds. That's a parent responsibility. They're responsible for that dog. You know, whether they give it to their kids or not. So, so you look for the dog owner. It doesn't matter who, who that is. So, and so then the subsequent offenses would go to that dog owner. And in our report, we would document who owns the dog. So it'd be case, another officer handles a second case, they could look it up and say, okay, we've already had a case with this person, this is a subsequent offense. The 50 and $100, that's the, that's the deposit amount. So the fines are actually higher than that because there's court fees and court fines and there's other things that attach to it. That's the, the 50 and $100 is what comes back to the village. Those are the deposit amounts. But there's all kinds of other administrative fees. So that $100 ticket is probably going to be $187 when it's all said and done, something like that. And then, then we get the deposit and the rest goes to court fees and, and other things.
I have Sarah?
Just curious, if you were to follow them on these calls, hide them in the owner's room and in doing the investigation, learn that the dog is not licensed, would that, would you then issue a warning or a citation for failure to license?
So kind of like, like all our laws, there's a lot of officer discretion. So we try to follow, let the officer make some good decisions. So, you know, I don't believe in heavy-handed policing. You know, we could probably issue, you know, 10 tickets to one person. That's just, you want to have voluntary compliance rather than, than just issuing tickets. We can, we can hire a whole bunch of officers to just write tickets. That's not going to curb the problem. It'll probably generate more problems and more complaints. So what we would probably do in a case like that is if we find multiple violations, and we have. You handle a case, dog bite, all of a sudden it doesn't have its, it didn't have the tags that it should have, it was loose. We might give a couple of warnings with a caveat that you got 10 days to fix this. If you don't fix this, then we follow up and make sure that if you didn't fix it, then. And we've had a couple stubborn people that have absolutely do not want to do that. We had one where the dog had defecated. The officer, this is before this became kind of the top thing. When I first got here in February, March, we had a gentleman who his dog defecated in the yard. The officer followed through, said, hey, you got to clean that up. The guy refused to clean it. So the officer wrote him a ticket and then cleaned it. I even put doggy bags in the squad cars. So if they, you know, we run into people who don't have dog bags to clean after. So there's no excuse because we carry them, so we can hand them to the owner. And we did, but this gentleman refused to clean it. And it was someone's actual property. Wasn't even a village property. It was, it was someone's property and he was just stubborn about it. So we run into those type of people from time to time. And we just, then we'll might issue the citation right away. Just depends.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, so moved. And I want to thank the public safety and parks for moving this through. All right, discussion and possible action to adopt an ordinance concerning EMS, district and fire department and volunteer funds. Before we get too much on this, did Matt, did attorney Matt Flynn and Paul come up?
No, so I had a discussion with, with Paul on this, and he never received a call from attorney Matt.
Okay, then I'm asking that we refer this because what we don't want to do is keep bringing this back up, so. This was put on the agenda with the assumption that the fire district attorney and our attorney would work out the little bit of changes and then we would have this. So I will ask that we move this to the September meeting. Bill?
Do we link back, I'm sorry, do we need to approve ordinance to repeal and recreate section 2114? There's no ordinance number on it, but, so we had the memo and we approved, we approved the.
There was an ordinance that was attached as part of the packet.
Yeah, we, in the motion.
So the motion was.
So the motion doesn't prove that one.
Yeah. We, what we used to do, so there, there was a shift in that we used to give the ordinance the number in the packet. But through discussion and action of the board, sometimes they got mixed up because you would approve the ordinance number and it wouldn't go in order. So, so what we're doing now is approving the ordinance specifically and then numbering it thereafter.
Okay. Sorry, I did.
No, that's all right. So I'll make a motion to refer item 6 to the September meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Number seven, discussion and possible action regarding the 2020 capital improvement project. We'll start with the street repaving. Is Jerry on?
Jerry is on. Jerry, go ahead.
Okay, I think I spelled everything out pretty good in my report. We did some extra work in-house. Went out for new numbers. They came back substantially less than what I originally thought I was going to have to spend. And tri-county paving, so slightly less than Scott Construction. Either one is a competent contractor. So I, I guess I'm open to questions.
Well, just so I know, you're looking for us to approve the agreement with Tri-County Paving Company, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so let's get a, a motion on the table. Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Tri-County Paving. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve the paving of Tri-County Paving Company. Discussion now. Any questions for Jerry?
Thank you, Jerry, for doing the work in house.
All right, Jerry, did you hear that? We're thanking you for the work that you've done on, on this.
Okay, yeah, I couldn't hear you, sorry.
That's all right.
Bill? Hey, Jerry, I see that for Tri-County, they're charging slightly more, 50 cents more per ton, but their paving cost is cheaper?
Correct.
For the same work? That doesn't make sense. That doesn't make sense to me.
Well, the gravel is, the gravel, extra gravel needed for fine grading, is that what you're asking about, or?
Well, it's just a paving, paving cost, oh yeah, well, maybe that's it. It says the paving cost is $68,172 and the per ton cost for gravel, 17.
That's, that would, that will be, any gravel that's needed to finalize the finished grade, that will be over and above the $68,000.
Okay, okay.
So we're hoping they don't need a lot of gravel?
Yeah, historically, it's less than 100 ton.
Okay, any other questions for Jerry? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, so moved. All right, you can go ahead with it. We approved the. All opposed, same. So moved. All right, you can go ahead with it. We approved the contract with Tri-County Paving.
Sounds good.
All right, we'll move on to the funding of the water system, infrastructural assessment, and well three test well drilling.
I can, I can take that one.
All right.
Uh, so this was discussed at the last meeting in regards to financing or funding the, the two projects this year in regard to the water system infrastructure and well three test well. Um, to get that, at that time, I had recommended that some of that, that funding come from the capital improvement fund, suggested by President Langfield, that that come out from Water Utility Unassigned Fund Balance. And so at that time, we wanted to double check to make sure that we would be able to get through with the sign, unassigned fund balance, and we are. So that's the recommendation. So you'll see here that we'll first spend the ninety thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars from the bond proceeds that, that's unspent, and then the remainder of that cost would be coming from the unassigned. Uh, the caveat here, as stated by the engineer at the time, was that we still would then need to bid, we still need to bid the test well drilling. So we don't know what the real number is at, at this point.
All right. Do I have a motion? The motion would be to take the funds from the Water Utility Fund Balance for the water infrastructure engineering and the test well drilling. All right, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. Kevin?
I just wanted to, what will that do to the balance for Water Utility? Will that zero it out? Or will there be something left in there? I can't remember. There was a number that we wanted to retain.
Yeah. So for the, for the unassigned fund balance for the Water Utility, Utility, there will be amount. I don't know off the top of my head, and Bobby is on here, but maybe able to answer that.
This should be about, I would say around seventy thousand. Because we're using ninety thousand from the bond, and I think we had about a hundred and thirty-six thousand in the fund balance. And that's where the sixty would come from. And I'm just going on my memory.
We can find that, that number again.
Yeah, I just recall there being some minimums we wanted to keep in there and ensuring that we were doing that and not zeroing it out was my only concern. If that's been met, and Jay's confirming that, I hope, if Bobby could confirm that, I'm supportive.
Hey, Bobby, can you, are you able to get in there and take a look at that number?
Um. I can probably remote into my, I have my computer shut off at work, so I can't remote it. I don't know off the top of my head what's in there, but I know we have more than enough to cover that forty-nine thousand.
I can tell you from her document dating, uh, when we met and talked on twelve thirty-one of twenty nineteen, which is end of last year, we had two hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Yeah, I thought it was over two hundred.
Yeah, it's two hundred. And then we have, in the bond fund at that time, we had ninety thousand, three hundred and eighty-six. Twenty-six thousand, I always thought. Great. Yeah. I think we're okay. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. So moved. So you move forward with bidding the test well then. And we'll see what, what happens there. All right, number eight, discussion and possible action regarding the proposed twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-five capital improvement plan. I would like us to spend most of the time on the twenty-twenty-one. I think after that, it's, not that it's not warranted, but it's very difficult to predict what's going to happen in twenty-twenty-one. So I don't know how much time we would like to spend the years after that. But that is totally up to the group. I'm just throwing that out. All right. I think what we will do is we will go straight down the handout. I would like for us to do two things. One, make a decision if we should approve this expenditure and then a discussion on where the funding may come from. There are options that we would have. So I think that's what the two items we'll do when we get each one of these. So the first one on the list is the stormwater mitigation implementation. And I don't know, all, most of us have been informed on this. This is the fourteen acres off of P and the Far West and PI Cultures side of town. So Bill, why don't you review that?
Okay. Thank, thank you. So what we have proposed here is a project that is dependent on the village receiving grant dollars to pay a portion of the project. Uh, you do see in their proposal here that the majority of the dollars will be, would be paid by U.S. Economic Development Administration, approximately fifty percent of the cost. And so the project, what it includes is water retainer on the fourteen acres, uh, which would be to the east of Highway coming P as part of the creek crossing development. Uh, the village board approved in agreement or an option of purchase agreement on that property and executable at the time that the village board deemed so. We are waiting to make sure that we get the grant funding for that before executing. That in itself carries a total cost of three hundred and three thousand dollars. The second half of that project is on the west, northwest section of the village. Uh, includes primarily a large storm sewer from the intersection of Park Street and Market Street and shooting west into the creek at that point. Uh, that carries a total cost of about eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, and what we're proposing here to split the cost between U.S. EDA, WEDC, and then so that the, the potential impact to the village would be three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred of that amount, um, up to the village board to decide whether you want to take that out of borrowing for the improvement over on the northwest section of town that is within the tax increment district. And so therefore, that is a funding option.
All right. I have Kevin and Bill.
Uh, Bill, I couldn't make the numbers add up on this one. With WEDC, two sixteen, TIP, two sixteen, eight sixty-seven, I just, I couldn't quite figure out three sixty-eight came out of that one. There's also a hundred fifty-one for the village application on the second line.
Yeah, so basically, it's the one fifty-one from the village.
Yep.
And the TIP, dollars of two sixteen.
But where does the, where does the total get to eight sixty-seven then from, you know, we, WEDC and TIP is four thirty-two roughly, half that cost, I guess. Where's the other half of that eight sixty-seven?
So that will be U.S. EDA.
Okay, that just wasn't in there.
Yeah.
On it. Okay, thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Bill.
So, um, the project along the county P, where the fourteen acres of land is that, right?
Yeah.
Um, one, we haven't received funding for that yet, and two, uh, it sounds like that is not a viable solution at this point from the owner of that property. Is that still correct?
Uh, incorrect. Uh, so the fourteen acres is in regard, in relation to the St. Francis Creek Crossing.
Okay.
You're talking about the bigger project. You're correct, farther upstream.
Up.
That when we, this is a much smaller project than what we were originally planning.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so we were talking that, I believe, and I don't have the numbers with me, and I apologize for that. From the report that we got from the floodwater mitigation, uh, people that did that, was that, was that even with that bigger property of land, this was only gonna, this was only going to protect Black Earth Creek by like, less, by five percent or six percent. It was very small number by the time that water got into Black Earth Creek. Now, it might have a little bit more effect on Brewery Creek
Yes.
than it would on Black Earth Creek, right?
Correct.
So the question is, is are we, are, so do we want to spend, in this time, do we want to spend three hundred and three thousand dollars to protect Brewery Creek? Really? Because that's what we're, that, that's potentially what we're protecting, just for.
No, we're protecting the homes along Brewery Creek. We, we had a lot of damage on Valley Street and some of those houses. So what we're trying to do is protect that part of the village.
I understand that, but it was over a hundred-year flood. I mean, that was, that was not even a hundred years. That was a two-hundred-year flood or something like that. I'm saying, what is?
But it floods. We've had flooding down there before.
So if I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, uh, you know, from looking at, at the history, the history of flooding here across the plains and amount of water that comes down, not only from, from the Black Earth Creek, but also the Brewery Creek watershed. There's not going to be a, a one solution, fix-all here. You know, the weave, during that report, they named a few projects that that could make sense. Now, you know, depending on where you are along either of the streams, uh, there's significant impact, there's, there's significant clogs in the system that we'll have to fix. For example, even if you were able to retain the five-hundred-year flood on Brewery Creek, North of P, you have a number of coverts along the way that potentially the water could overrun, depending on where your storm, your, your storm surge is. And, you know, if you remember, a part of that study that was found uh, was some questioning of the water data on, along, especially at Valley Street. Uh, and whether or not it captured what we're calling the lower Brewery Creek watershed. Essentially, Bear Park and everything west of, or excuse me, east of Bear Park. That the engineers, the hydraulic, hydraulic, in this, this, this study found that, you know, it wasn't really considered by FEMA when they remapped that section. And so, you know, again, there's not an easy answer here to try to resolve all the flooding issues here. But this is an attempt at that with funding that's available right now. Uh, just a reminder that, that the U.S. EDA funding for the flood mitigation project is a result of the twenty-eighteen flood. We understand that there's a time period on that, and once the money runs out, it, it runs out. It's not a recurring grant like some of these other grants that we, we try to apply.
Correct.
And so the opportunity is upon us to get something done. And, you know, we continue to look for other opportunities to match those funds. Uh, the project, just to make a correction here, the project on Brewery Creek, although it carries a total amount, a total cost of three hundred and three dollars, we are proposing that if, that fifty percent of that get paid by U.S. EDA. So then the impact to the village would be approximately a hundred and fifty thousand.
And, and I think you have to also add on that the land, we're not purchasing the land. And that has a value of probably three hundred and fifty thousand at fourteen acres. So I think you're looking at, basically, we're getting a half a million, over a half a million dollar project. And we're, yeah, it'll be six, basically six, six, six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for a hundred and fifty-one thousand.
No, I, I.
Can I just say, and I think while there isn't going to be this solution that we're going to end the flooding, I think that area clearly has a flooding problem. It, it, the one storm, yes, it was a big one, but we've had other ones there that is the problem. I think even, which you talk about the five percent, that's five percent we're helping in Black Earth Creek. I think the numbers on the top were closer to like twenty percent for the brewery uh, part of it. And I think we have an obligation as policymakers to start going in that direction, even though it may not have this huge impact. But I think both these projects together will have a positive impact. And I think we need to move in that direction.
So, so, I mean, I, I get it. I understand. But what I'm, what I'm looking at is, well, let me, let me kind of base this up of my assumption. We haven't talked about it yet with this group, but my assumption is that this pandemic is not going away in a year. It's not going away by the end of the year. It's going to continue on, my opinion is going to continue on through twenty-twenty-one. So our, our, our sources of revenue are going to be limited. And I understand the timeframe on this and I agree with it and I'll back it. But, but I'm, I'm looking at the dollars. So yes, we got the land. We're not having to pay for that, and I get that. But that's not money out of our pocket. That's not real dollars out of our pocket. Hundred and fifty thousand dollars is money out of our pocket. So that's what I'm looking at. And, and that's what I think we need to be, as a, as a team, looking at for next year.
But he's wanting to show that this money starts really hitting the books in twenty-twenty-two.
Doesn't matter.
Well, it, it does in the sense that we're, and I agree with you for twenty-twenty-one, but this is not hitting twenty-twenty-one. This would be hitting the books in twenty-twenty-two.
But we don't know what twenty-twenty-two is going to look like.
Well, I agree with you, but I, I just wanted to make sure that, I agree with you that we have to take a very cautious, conservative look at twenty-twenty-one for sure.
Right, okay.
That's all.
Okay.
Michael?
Uh, this is just, Bill, you were talking about the funding on the, on the Berman, on the eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar project. And so it's, it's basically two sixteen, seven on the TIP, on the village, on the U.S. EDA, and on the WEDC. Is that right? Is that divided evenly amongst those?
Yeah. So basically, what I did here was take the total project cost of eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, divide that by half. Because fifty percent would be matched by, by WEDC. The other fifty percent would be coming from local. So our local match can be a state agency. We reached out to WEDC to see if we could put in a grant for this. Uh, their response back was that if we are applying for it through U.S. EDA, that they would, they would entertain an application to match at least a quarter percent of it. And then, so then, so then pretty much the village will be covering a quarter of the cost, whether that's from general fund or whether that's from TIP. Your decision. Uh, but I believe that the tax increment district is in a, in a good position here to, to expand. So this removes the, uh, tax burden from the general fund.
So you said a quarter, but so the TIP is going to take a quarter and then the village is going to take a quarter. Is that, or is that, am I reading that wrong?
The TIP would be the, the village's portion.
Oh. So what you have is.
So, so I'm, I'm confused.
Okay, here, let me tell you.
Yeah.
So from the federal government, they'll pay for half.
That's the U.S. EDA?
Yeah, so that's half. So now we have to come up with half. Now, the state says we'll pay for half of that half.
Oh, oh.
So they're paying for that half. So that leaves the half of the half, and that's where the twenty-five percent comes from.
Wow, so the U.S. EDA is doing like four-thirty then? Yeah. On this project?
Yeah.
Half.
Oh, wow, okay, okay. All right, Kevin?
I, yeah, I just wanted to make that point. It's the same question I had earlier, Michael. The village would pay out three sixty-eight. Uh, the feds and the state combined would be seven oh two. So, um, not only is it really an important project from an infrastructure standpoint, our money is being matched twice. So every dollar we put in is almost matched by two dollars otherwise. Um, and not often do those opportunities come, come by. I, I think even in, in two or five years, or whenever we have a better fiscal position, you look at this and say, okay, let's do this one twenty-one million dollar. I, I think even in, in two or five years or whenever we have a better fiscal position, you look at this and say, okay, let's do this one twenty one million dollar project. And I very much doubt that that board at that time will take the opportunity to do it.
Yep.
So.
All, all right, so any other questions or discussion on this?
And, and again, this is dependent on receiving.
Yeah.
Funding from both parties.
We will have that in the, the motion. Bill?
So we don't have to, we don't have to decide how we're gonna fund it, we're just gonna decide that we're gonna spend the money.
Well, remember what I said earlier. First of all, I wanna know if we're gonna take this in two steps. So, number one is to approve this project with the funding from the state and federal. To me would be the motion. And then number two, we'll discuss where do we wanna take the money from. Bill is suggesting for the one project from the TIF, but it can also come from general borrowing. The other one, we really only have the choice of general borrowing. Now, we'll have a little bit left over in our capital fund balance, so we could cut that down a little bit. But again, I think what I'm looking for is where do we wanna take the money? First of all, do we want the project? Number two, where are we suggesting the money comes from?
Michael, can I, uh, can I ask a specific question about the project? This is the question about the Birmont, the first one down there? Is that, can I do that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the Birmont is being constructed along the edge of the PI parking lot property and then it like levels out downward? What's the, what's the idea with the water there? Like, what's happening?
I thought you were putting a fifty-four inch pipe there.
Well, it's, it's part of both and we'll go more into detail in regards to which parts of property and whole section later. But essentially, it's to divert water from that hill behind this, behind this old property.
Okay, so.
Get that out of the parking lot of PI, get that into, uh, catch basins under the intersection of, uh, Park Street and Market Street and then transport it via sewer to the creek. Now, the redesign of that intersection in the street will also allow for a larger drainage bath to over, overflow along, uh, that section of Park Street into, uh, what's wetlands down there. And so it will be, you know, in a smaller event, it would be by, by drainage, uh, via storm sewer. In a large event, it would be, uh, via overflow.
So you're trying to keep the water from running into the PI parking lot by building the Birmont? Then, then I noticed it stops further up and then it hits the road, goes down to the intersection, like it goes across.
We're trying to keep kind of that corner dry.
Well, no, you're directing all the water from the hill into that corner, like right into that intersection and keeping it from going across.
Yeah, what we can discuss.
I was, I'm just curious how, what the deal.
All right, any other discussion?
All right, so. I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, for twenty twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty one. The Stormwater Mitigation Implementation Plan is presented here today, provided that we are successfully getting the state and federal grants.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second. Uh, any other discussion? Let's do a roll call vote on these.
All right. Uh, trustee Francois?
No.
Trustee, uh, Xander?
Yes.
Trustee Pamakowski?
Yes.
Trustee Lucius?
Yes.
Trustee Kellam Water?
Yes.
Trustee Brocious?
Yep.
President Langfield?
Yes. All right, so the next step would be, um, for the first project, which is the west end of the village. Do we want to, uh, use TIF funds? Or do you want it under, uh, the actual levy borrowing?
I made a motion that needs TIF funds.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and, uh, second to use TIF funding for the improvement on the west side of, of the village. Any discussion? Bill?
So what are the disadvantages and advantages of using TIF versus using, uh, general fund?
TIF would not come the, from the taxpayers. The TIF itself would pay from the the extra money that's being brought in from the improvements. If you do it from borrowing, then it would come from the levy and it would be part of our debt service.
Aren't we in the red for TIF right now?
We should be coming out now, this year or next year.
But we're still in the red.
Yes.
Right, and now we're gonna go more into the red by two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
Well, yes, but, but you have to understand if, uh, the question you have to ask yourself, if a company came in here and says, I'm gonna build, I'd like to build an office here and I'll hire ten people, would you give them two hundred and sixteen dollars from the TIF to help them come to Cross Plains?
No.
You wouldn't?
No. Because our TIF is, our TIF is overblown. We've, we've, we have, we've spent the last three, four years in the red on our TIF. And we just, we need to settle that TIF then.
Okay, first of all, the TIF is, the whole idea of a TIF is to go into the red, right? That's, you're investing into your community and then the investment pays it back. So it doesn't come from the taxpayers. Now, our TIF is not, while it is in the red, it doesn't need to come out of the red until twenty thirty five. And we will be out of the red way before that.
But we still pay money on the TIF every year that's in, that's in the red. We pay interest on that, right?
Yes, we have to cover the TIF costs, but my understanding is we won't have to.
So, so the amount that, that is in the red on, on the, in the tax increment district currently, are those payments made by the, the sewer, uh, utility borrowed to the tax increment district and the general fund over to the tax increment district? And so currently, right now, uh, the annual report shows that, uh, you know, the annual increment from the tax increment district is positive. However, it still holds to that sewer utility and it still holds to the general fund, therefore it has an overall negative cash flow.
So, okay, Michael? So then, how is the TIF gonna pay this two hundred and sixteen? Is it gonna have to go out and do a borrow specifically? Is the TIF gonna have to go do a borrow?
So, so what we would do here is, is account, um, the expense to the tax increment district. And as the increment district pays to the village, um, it would, it would make payments to that. Now, the, the tax increment district does not have borrowing powers, so you can't go to the bank and ask for money. The village has gotta be the vehicles.
Well, is the village gonna borrow in the name of the TIF on this or not? It is. So it is gonna go out and borrow in the name, that's how we're gonna find the two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. We're gonna do.
Cash, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna do, we're gonna do a borrow.
But the payment is gonna come from the TIF.
Right, exactly. Yeah, the TIF is gonna be, but the village will do a borrow for the two sixteen.
Yes, I got a few comments here from, uh, from Bobby. Bobby, I'll unmute you, you had some comments in regards to the tax increment district.
I think with what we're projecting the TIF to generate in positive cash flow this year and next year, it might almost be that two hundred and sixteen thousand. Like if you look in your budget binders that were handed out or will be handed out. You go to the TIF expenditure tab.
Well, because what, what Bill had said is because the TIF holds.
Just a minute, we lost the microphone.
Yeah, I think if, if the TIF just puts off paying back the sewer this year and next year, like the budget shows us starting to pay the sewer back. But we could instead use the funds we generate this year and next year to pay that two sixteen for part of it. So that, I don't remember the exact numbers, I didn't bring the budget home with me.
Haven't we already borrowed from sewers?
Yeah, that's what she's saying. If we don't make those payments to sewer to repay and use that money to pay for this, we won't have to borrow. So instead of taking the two hundred and sixteen thousand and returning it to sewer, we would use it for this project and you wouldn't have to borrow.
We just delay our repayment.
I mean, eventually we would pay the sewer back, we just wouldn't do it as soon as, yeah.
Kevin?
Yeah, and the, the bigger picture here, I think, if you look through the whole year, is that this is the only one that in the TIF, right? And the only one that could, that could be funded by those funds, uh, is this project. So, if we're gonna use it anywhere in next year's capital invested, this is the spot to use.
Judy, you wanted to say something? All right, any other questions on this? I, I forgot, did we have a motion?
Yeah, there was a motion by, uh, trustee Kellam Water and second by, uh, trustee Lucius.
Okay, very good. All right, Bill?
One more.
Yep.
So, if we use the TIF, if we use funds for the TIF, does that mean that water sewer prices are gonna go up again for our residents?
It does not, no.
That's, that's, it's wanna just make that clear.
First of all, it's not gonna go up because of this project. Water will go up when that well is.
I understand, I understand the well, totally understand the well.
But no, to answer your question, water rates and sewer rates will not go up with using TIF money.
So.
Okay, cause that was done out of fund balance.
So the, the taxing, not the money from the tax increment is not impacted by rates. It's, 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 it's basically the tax levy within the tax increment district measured between, uh, in two thousand and four and now.
No, but he was worried that if we don't pay the sewer back and we'd have to raise the rates, cause we're not giving them the money. So, it, it was a, it was a fund balance that you guys used to do that.
Didn't we pass a resolution that we were gonna pay back that money in twenty twenty one?
No, overpaying in twenty twenty one was part of the, uh, Highway fourteen bill that wasn't paid. That's the only one that we actually.
Okay.
Correct, now, now there was.
Now it's not sewer water.
There was a separate resolution for the tax increment district to pay back the waters, uh, pay back the sewer utility for the monies borrowed.
Right, so do we?
We formalized what had, had been a shake hand deal.
Yeah, right, 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 so.
We didn't put a timeline.
So, but that's when Bobby said that we, we don't pay that one back in twenty twenty one, we can borrow against it, right?
Well, you're not, what it is, is you gave, sewer gave the TIF four hundred and some dollars alone, interest free.
Right.
Didn't put a requirement, how many years to pay it back. So we, we were going, obviously the plan, when there is extra money in the TIF, we would start paying off these loans. What she's suggesting, instead of paying off, starting to pay the loans off this year and next year, you use that money to fund this project.
I understand it, but, but I thought we put a timeframe on that borrowing. And if we had to, we need to, we need to rectify that.
No, I think we just formalized that there was actually a borrowing that went on.
Can, can I make a suggestion here? So, you know, we're, we're talking a, a lot of what ifs, depending on whether or not we receive the grant or not. Uh, although I understand, you know, the, the importance of deciding whether it comes from the tax increment district now or, or borrowing, uh, the situation that we don't get the grant or in a situation that we, we get a grant, you know, there's gonna be an implementation or execution period after we sign a grant agreement. Which usually spans the, the length of two years, so twenty-four months. Uh, you know, I, I would suggest maybe tabling the decision of whether or not it comes from the tax increment district or the, the general fund until that point. Uh, we're talking about, you know, two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars here, two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars here. Um, for which, uh, whether it comes out from short-term financing or the tax increment district, I, I think, I think we can handle that at that point.
I think that'd be prudent.
Okay. I, I mean, I'm okay with that. Uh, just, just remember, we're, we're, we're tying, we're saying we're going forward. So, we're moving forward with this, so people have to, we're gonna have to come up with, with the money.
Well, right, but we'll have a better understanding as we get closer to where we need it, of where we should be pulling it from, instead of right now, right?
I, I don't see any difference, but I, I think we wanna move it forward and I'm okay with that. It's, it's not, the numbers aren't gonna change any.
I think we don't know if we even need to argue about it, so let's just wait and have the argument if we need it.
Yeah, no, you're correct on that.
And the vote. Right?
Okay, well, well, that's up to you guys. All right, so, and, so the discussion is, right now the motion is to take the two hundred and sixteen from, uh, the TIF. So, we'll do a roll call vote.
Trustee Brocious?
No.
Trustee Kellam Water?
Yes.
Trustee Lucius?
Yes.
Trustee Pamakowski?
No.
Trustee Xander?
Yes.
Trustee Francois?
I guess.
President Langfield?
Yes.
Motion carries for the parade.
Okay, we'll go. Uh, we'll go into number two. The next one is the GIS mapping update.
So, this project was added, um, as our current mapping system is at its capacity. Um, you know, we did ask for our engineering firm to take a look at, at what potentially we could do with it. Currently, the system that we have is a, a desktop version, single user. And so, we map into it, um, remotely, uh, at least I do. I believe it's the same situation with, um, the public facilities. I think it's actually on their desktop, their public facilities. Um, the technology is moving to a cloud base, uh, in that we do have a number of, of projects coming out that we'd like to, uh, get that information recorded, um, as we go. And we've seen a more, we've seen more, uh, demand from the public on, in regards to, you know, what the village is doing. And this is something, a product that we'll be able to, to bring, uh, to the residents via our website and link it. It'll also help track our assets. So, for example, uh, we have a number of trees that are diseased, uh, we can track them. Uh, and as we remove, uh, and create a replacement plant, we can, we can add that, uh, to the mapping. Uh, we can add things like trails, uh, obviously road improvements, uh, zoning, et cetera. And so, the amount that you see before you, uh, the total amount is eighteen thousand dollars, of which, leave, uh, ten thousand dollars, uh, is for the equipment to record. And then, the eight thousand dollars is for the software update.
All right, do I have a motion?
I made a motion to approve the GIS mapping update.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the GIS mapping update, open for discussion.
What's the software?
Our GIS.
Well, are there annual dues for this?
There, there are. Uh, it's depending on the amount of licenses that you get. Um, I believe one license is a hundred dollars. Um, and it just depends on who has access to it.
Are we currently paying dues for our current mapping software?
I don't believe we are.
Okay. So, and how many users do you suspect will have this?
So, uh, it depends on what level of users. Um, you know, I, I think definitely for myself, uh, on any aspect. And, um, it'll be Mike Exon for Parks and Rec and then, uh, Jerry Gray for our public facilities. Um, as a second level, so we'd be able to go in there and make changes. Um, and then on the first level, uh, it, it would be your public facility staff going to be able to put in, put, uh, in information, but not necessarily being able to change it.
And they're all a hundred dollars or?
So I, I believe.
Generally, the top ones are a hundred dollars and the users are free, but.
Yeah, yeah, so it depends on, again, whether it's a, it's a view only or if it's an input. Um, you know, some of, you know, what we have proposed here is, is equipment, field equipment for, I believe, only one unit. And so, I would, I would suspect that we will, would use a workaround, so we buy one license for them to input and have, um, each be able to log in on the same password, uh, and login account instead of having. And login account instead of having an individual one for them.
All right, I have Sarah and Bill.
Phil, what's your opinion on putting it down one year after we're done paying for the three-year software commitment that we're in year two of right now? The accounting stuff, you know, we bought that three.
So I don't, I don't think I have an issue with putting it off a year. The big thing is that you have, you'll miss out on projects. You'll have to load the projects that you have in this year, so you'll have to back all that information in. And so it'd be really good to, to try to capture that information earlier. But we can definitely put it off for a year if the financing is an issue here.
Phil?
I just make a point that, you know, working for a software company, sharing a password and username is really not a secure thing to do.
Yeah, I know.
And, and I appreciate trying to save the village money, but I would prefer that if we need three licenses, we get three licenses.
That's why, that's why I hesitated to say that publicly.
Okay, man?
Yeah, I'm quite familiar with using these at work as well, Arc, I use every day. What kind of data collection unit are you looking at?
So it's a terminal unit. I do have that information here, just.
Is it truly units? So I guess any, what we've all gone to is, we've got our Arc terminal going on.
Okay.
The interface is easier, it's cheaper. TechSoup, have you looked at TechSoup?
We have not, no, I know that doing it, doing.
That's one place to look just for funding, I mean, for potential grants and funding. We, as a nonprofit, we get our stuff there and it's a lot less expensive. This, Esri, this Arc software could be tens of thousands for the professional stuff, so just for one license. So going through TechSoup is an option. And then don't underestimate the amount of training and time that we'll go into making this useful. Both at the desktop and in the field, so those are my comments. But otherwise, I'm generally supportive, this is always good information you get at the time you're doing projects. Because it, putting, doing it retroactively, just, it takes a lot more time and effort to do, or you just don't do it, is what happens.
I guess I'm, if I can just follow up, Kevin, are you suggesting a different company than what they're saying?
No, no, just, yeah, TechSoup, it just happens to be that their site is demonstrating how much they run. But I, I would try to see if municipalities would qualify, but they, Esri, the current company of Arc, puts a lot of, like Microsoft puts all their stuff into TechSoup, TechSoup and the Gartner stuff. And pushes it out to nonprofits, to municipalities, I think, for the discounts. You are limited to the number of licenses, how often you can ask them for stuff, like once a year for us. So it's just a way to get it a lot, I think a lot cheaper, I'm just suggesting, Bill, at least look into that as a possibility of getting less expensive.
Okay, because I know nothing about this, so I, I don't even know what we're really talking about, but.
Michael?
So, Bill, you say it's a single-user desktop version, what does that mean? There's one computer in the office where you go and use it and Jerry comes and he uses it?
I believe it's, it's, it's downloaded on your local desktop and then we're, we're able to remote into view it. So, for example, if I, on the system right now, if I wanted to, to print them in, per se, and, and design it in a way that, that I want to, there's, there's one user that would be able to do that.
Like right now, it's a single, whereas this new one, it's a cloud base, you could just bring it up.
They have a license.
Depending on the licenses.
So do you have to have, if residents wanna use it, they have, we have to get licensed?
No, so you can, you can.
I don't understand.
Yeah, so you can control it. And it would be my recommendation that you don't allow residents to change maps.
No, but would they view them?
Yeah, they would be able to view them.
For free?
For free.
Correct, correct.
So the way that I've used it in Arcadia, for example, is every time that, that, you know, we're planning an expansion, you know, we'll be able to pull flood maps, everything that you can do on the Dean County ArcGIS map, but then you're able to also pull in a private infrastructure material that, that we currently have in our system. And it's gonna show you, me as a planner, you know, where are those laterals, where are those connection points on a parcel map? The zoning for it, and it makes me able to present that information to you a lot easier. And then also in regards to the public knowledge, so like trails, all the maps that you see on, whether it be Ice Age Trail or whether it be Dean County, all that public information. Most likely, that's, that's produced on our ArcGIS project. You know, that's, that's ninety-nine point nine percent of, of all geographic information is somehow run through that program. But not only is, is an important aspect for mapping, but it also helps, it can help us track our assets, right? So I, I think that probably has more value than the mapping portion of it.
All right, everybody understood it, any other discussions?
Yeah.
So, how much easier would this make your job having this, Bill?
Well, as far as planning, it would make, it would, it would bring everything in for one point. Now, Kevin does make a good point that, you know, it's part of this, this, the back, the background work, the background work in inputting data, making sure data is accurate, making sure that it shows up on, on the correct layer, making sure that you're properly trained to handle the software. And so, in the proposal that, that we have from Town and Country, you know, we're purchasing the license to, to have a product work for us, but they have Arc, an ArcGIS person there at Town and Country, so the, the information will go in from, from us. They take care of putting it into the mapping software and then we're able to access it.
All right, everybody comfortable in, in voting? All right, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Xander? Trustee Pamakowski?
Yes.
Trustee Thucius?
Yes.
Trustee Calaboter?
Yes.
Trustee Brocious?
Yes.
Trustee Francois?
No.
President Lainfeld?
Uh, yes.
Motion carries.
And let's talk about funding, I will just try to, I think we should use our out of the fund balance that we currently have. So we don't have to borrow on this, we can use the fund balance. If my numbers are correct, we should easily have enough to cover it. So do I have a motion to cover this cost with the current capital fund balance?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, so move. All right, we'll go to the Civic System Software and Services. This is the third and final year of this software. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, sorry. Go into year three of the initial implementation investment for borrowing to replace village software with Civic System software. And this year would be the annual maintenance for the software, I'm sorry, the third and final year of purchasing the software at thirty thousand dollars.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second to approve the request for the Civic System Software and Services. Open up for discussion. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Calaboter?
Yes.
Trustee Thucius?
Yes.
Trustee Pamakowski?
Yes.
Trustee Xander?
Yes.
Trustee Francois?
Yes.
Trustee Brocious?
Yes.
President Lainfeld?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is the Bear Park Improvement. This is the east end, we have thirty thousand already.
Jake?
Oh.
Did you wanna talk about financing or funding for that? Are you okay with it coming from borrowing?
I, I, oh yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I, I believe we can still, we can take it from the capital fund balance. But then that, what, what that would do, if my numbers are correct, it would leave the fifty thousand that we've agreed to as a fund balance. And it would leave fifty thousand to cover the library roof in case it comes in, which I think it will, more than seventy-five thousand. But I left a cushion of fifty thousand, so we're not in a bind if the bids come in higher. So it can come from that if we wanna use it for that. Kevin?
Yeah, I, I, I think Sarah's motion mentioned specifically borrowing in the motion.
Oh, I read it straight from that.
And, and, so I thought we covered that already, that's why I wasn't gonna stop you, but if, if it didn't cover borrowing, I'm, I'm happy to go back. Sarah, was your intention to?
No.
Well, and, and you know what, I, I'm okay with that because the fund balance is borrowed money.
Yeah.
It's just what year you borrowed it.
Because I think we agreed, we, this is the third of the three years.
Yeah, I see, so.
The money's somewhere already, so it's.
Well, we.
All right, then, we don't.
Go ahead, Michael.
I was just gonna say, like, when we're talking about borrowing with the capital fund balance, next year when we go and do the borrow, if the library roof is done, we could just leave fifty thousand dollars in the capital fund balance and borrow whatever's left over, right? Or juice.
Absolutely, no, no, I, yeah, no, you're, you're right on that. It's just, if, if, if you have some direction, then it doesn't get tied up multiple times.
No, definitely, yeah.
But I'm fine with leaving it, it's under borrowing.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Nope, nope, that's a good catch. So, okay, we're back to Bear Park Improvement, East End. I believe that's already sitting in a fund balance. It's a dedicated fund balance, so it's there for that.
Mike, do you wanna talk a bit about that? What would you like to know?
Uh, this would be for playground equipment to be added to the Beakner site, or the site that's east side of Bear Park.
Like the Briennium?
Correct.
Yeah, this is their money. Where specifically?
Uh, it's within the plan, the park's plan for that area, uh, which would be located, sorry, the roads always mess me up a little bit. I believe it's, no.
Evergreen.
Evergreen Parkway, it'd be a long Evergreen Parkway, uh, near where the retention ponds are somewhat.
Yeah, it's like all the way down at that end.
Right, yeah.
And then does this include that trail, are there gonna be that trail back there?
The trail's already in place, I've been working on that all year this year, actually mowing it down, spraying it, adding, adding grass seeds to the trail. The walking path along that will already be in place, yes.
All right, can I get a motion and then, well, a motion we approved the twenty twenty-one expenditure with Bear Park Improvements of the East End? All right, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the Bear Park Improvements, East End, discussion. Kevin, again.
I, I just want, is that called Bear Park?
It is. It's the Bear Park Expansion is what the name ended up came up, so Bear Park.
Okay.
I always call it the Beakner Site on accident, but.
Any other discussion, roll call, oh, I'm sorry, Bill.
Uh, and we, and we have the money in a fund?
Correct.
Okay.
Once the last home was done, that, obviously all the money gets put into a parks, park improvement fund, uh, that's specific, specific for that area.
Okay, great, excellent.
All right, okay, Michael, and so then that park is going to be designed by the residents, is that right, like?
The playground.
Playground equipment goes in there and stuff?
Correct. We'll do an informational meeting with them and show them the funds that we have, come up with a plan for it.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Vander?
Yes.
Trustee Pamakowski?
Yes.
Trustee Thucius?
Yes.
Trustee Calaboter?
Yes.
Trustee Brocious?
Yes.
Trustee Francois?
Yes.
President Lainfeld?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, the money's there, so we don't have to do a vote on that. All right, we're at Police Department Server Update.
Good evening, so I was asked to look into other options. And I did finally get the, the actual quote, so you guys have seen, approximately was ten thousand dollars. That would include, it's actually ten thousand four hundred dollars, that would include the server. It would include update that is desperately needed for Arbitrator, which holds our video software. Arbitrator is our squad car videos, and when we, when they purchased this ways back, they had a certain amount of time with support and, and updates. That has not been updated in years, so we, when I took over, I, that was the first thing I looked at because I, I saw there were some deficiencies as far as video. And think, ideas that I had as far as having maybe some body cams, we're, we're in that kind of world now where we need to be recording and, and really covering all bases, so I knew that our server wasn't gonna be able to handle that in and of itself, so I had conversations with Baycom, who takes care of Arbitrator, and they, they then told me, you guys are really dated, and so we were already having some troubles and issues with our video. Thank God, nothing has happened, but those two things come to the ballpark of about eighty-seven hundred. And then we'll need a, our text to install it all, transfer all the data. So this is, this is a project that is desperately needed because we're already six years in, our video is very, very important. We use video not only in the squad cars, but all our, our, our interviews are recorded in-house, so, and videos take up a lot of storage space. And there's some requirements as far as how long we keep them, so we have to do that. So when I was asked to kind of look into possible iCloud, other capabilities that might be cheaper, there was two options, two things that I was asked to look into. First was the, the cloud, Arbitrator's made by Panasonic, they do not have a contract or anything worked out with Microsoft. They're working on something, but there's nothing in place for an iCloud type of situation. And, and the reasoning they have, they're struggling with that is because a lot of that video and that stuff also is protected by the state. And so there's a lot of requirements when it goes to that. You know, when you put things out in the cloud, they, they wanna make sure that it's secure and that you can't just get to it. So right now, there isn't anything in place. I, I spoke to Tim Cooney at Baycom, there's nothing available with regards to iCloud. It's probably coming because a lot of agencies are having those issues, but Panasonic specifically doesn't have anything. The other option that I was asked to, to look into was just to partner with Madison Police Department. They, there is a possibility to partner with them, we were actually part of them at one point for our documents, paperwork, tracks, which holds all our citations, things like that, but nothing video, they're, they don't have any kind of contract with their video. And it's something that they're not even interested in, in entering into any partnership and having people have access to their videos and, and vice versa. So, and even if we entered into something with Madison with regards to server, which would be more of the documents, you're looking at about a ninety-five hundred dollar a year bill, so it's not something that's quite popular, there's only a couple agencies doing that. And that, that is a different server, so that's not a video server. The video server is specifically the one that's dated, and that's what needs to be replaced, everything else, we're still, we're still okay. So I looked at those options, it, it doesn't look like that's feasible. I, I also spoke to Middleton and Fitchburg, because they use a lot, I mean, they use a lot of video. Their tech specifically said, if you can get this kind of server and this kind of update and, and get it all installed for that price, it's a bargain. It's a steal, because their, of course, theirs is a lot bigger than ours, but just based on the, the product we're getting, for what we would need, it's, it would be ideal. So, you know, I don't know anything about that stuff, so I reached out to the IT people in our area that work with, with video and, and maintain it. And so I do have the actual costs associated, and I said, like I said, it's about ten thousand four hundred rather than the ten thousand.
Jake? Phil? I'll make a motion that we approve the.
Bill, I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, server updates for the Fleet Department. All right, discussion, Bill.
Okay, so back to storage. So you're not gonna be able to store in the cloud because there's just not that capability at this point, not the security or the capability, right?
Yeah.
So with this new server, does it have storage capability on it? Or do we have to have a separate unit for storage?
No, that'll be the storage.
Do you know how much storage there is?
I couldn't tell you, but they said it would be enough because I, I already spoke to them about body cams added. So this is, I'm just kind of thinking in the future, hopefully, uh, we can get that program moving forward. But there's still a lot of research to be done for, for our area. There'd have to be policies and all kinds of, you know, things that would go into play. There's also an opinion about it one way or another, you know, whether we would want it. So there's just a lot, but I'm kind of just forward-thinking. So we can have a good enough server that would support that in the future, so.
So does the current video that you're currently storing? Because I understand keeping it for, you know, a certain amount of time. Does that go on this new server? Do we keep that on the old server as an archive or a how to sec?
No, I think everything will transfer over to the new server. Right now, this server's so dated.
Hi, everyone, this is Bill Chang. We just lost internet here at the public library. And so we've logged back in. Hopefully, uh, connection has restabilized. Can any, can everyone hear us? Okay, thank you. Thank you for that confirmation. I believe, uh, the place that we're at, I believe, uh, is in discussion of the Police Department's server update. There was a motion made by Trusty Brosios, a second by Trusty Kettleboulder, and we are in the discussion session currently.
So just to continue, Bill, I, I just think for accountability purposes, I'm a strong believer in video, just having it. And, and this is something that real, uh, it, it is something that definitely needs to be done. Out of all the things that I've been able to identify that we could do better or efficiency-wise, this is, this is right at the top.
So again, I'm in this business, not your business, but I'm in software, computers and all that, could do that forever. And, uh, totally understand obsolete, not up to date. And I think the sooner you can get this server, the better. So that's my opinion.
Here, here's my concern with this. I, I have no problem with moving it, all your data to another, another server. But the problem is we're not backing anything up. There's no redundancy. So if that brand-new server gets hit by lightning, all the data could be gone. And that's where my concern is. Now, I thought the Police Department used to every twenty-four hours, download onto an external drive and then unplug it.
I believe that, I believe that's still the case.
Well, that's the one thing, I don't, that's the one thing to me what is important is I understand the volume and the need to update servers. But to really protect the village, you need redundancy on this. So I, I, before, you know, we have ten thousand dollars, but I want to make sure, I'd like to know where we're re-copping our data. So if this server goes down, we haven't lost everything, which you're potentially saying is the reason to get it with the old server. So I just don't see anything in here that protects us from losing the data.
Okay.
And that's where I'm, I'm wondering where our redundancy is. Because you're right, losing police data is very critical.
I would, that old server was, was safe, was, is backing up into, into what you're saying already. So I think that the server is just to replace that server, and we would still be backing up into that external hard drive. But I can check into it and make sure that we're up to date. I spoke to our IT and they said this would be, this would take care of it, so we still, but I, I will make sure. I'll make sure that, that.
I do want, because to me, if you're getting this kind of server that can collect all this data, I'm surprised there isn't the request for the external memory stick or whatever we used, uh, to back us up. So we have that.
I will make sure that is available. If not, I will correct that and, and add more, more for that purpose, so.
And the state does not have it? Because I know for tracks and stuff, they help back up that stuff.
Yeah, not, not for any video. This is, this is departmental, you know, video.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call, both.
I just want to confirm, I just want to confirm that, uh, it's for ten thousand four hundred.
Yes.
It's dated, okay.
Yes.
Trusty Pamkowski.
Yes.
Trusty Thucius.
Yes.
Trusty Kettleboulder.
Yes.
Trusty Brosios.
Yes.
Trusty Francois.
Yes.
Trusty Vander.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we have a request for the squad replacement.
Okay. Again, I was asked to do some research, and I did. I spoke to the fleet manager in Madison, for Madison Police Department, since they, uh, went out and bought a bunch of hybrids. They actually bought twenty-nine of them. And so I, I received, I had some communications with him. And basically, he says they're, and, and I'm just gonna read kind of what, what he told me. But, um, his experience have been less than ideal. So about fifty percent of all those squads have had mechanical issues. So about half of what they purchased have either had faulty, from anywhere from faulty door locks to power window switches breaking, check engine lights, um, errors, uh, check engine light multiple times causing, uh, it to stop. Dashboard turning off with no warnings, uh, leaky transfer cases, um, transmission replacements. They were, they're required to go almost weekly into, to be checked. Now, this is, uh, obviously, this is something new that, it.
Yeah, that's what they're gonna tell me. Hello, everyone, we've noticed that we lost internet again.
I don't even have.
I want to make, make sure that everyone can hear us this time again.
But I think it's just affecting overall everything. I was considering switching.
Yeah.
Okay, we're, we're gonna try to give this a go again. Uh, it's telling me that it, there's an unstable connection with the, with the internet, so, uh. Jay, I don't know how you want to handle this, um, moving forward, but we can continue to try it.
Well, I think we continue with the meeting. If it goes down, try to bring it up, back up, and then we'll just give everybody, uh, update, maybe. But we will continue to move forward.
And we'll.
Quite a few items to go through.
Do we still have the phone, though?
Yeah, we can, we can, well. We can give a call back into, um, the system. I'm just thinking about how I want to record that.
Bill, can you just use your phones?
Well, we're not gonna take comment, so.
I'm not, you're trying to use the hot phone.
Well, let's, let's give this a go, and then we'll, we'll look for a solution if we do go out again.
I, well.
So, uh.
So just.
So it's not, the hybrids have not been, it's very reliable.
They haven't been very reliable, about fifty percent. The next question would be savings on gas, on fuel. The fuel savings that they predicted was about seventy-three hundred dollars. That's for a matter.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, do I have a motion to, uh, approve the purchase of a squad replacement? All right, Michael. I make a motion to replace the squad vehicle with the regular gasoline engines. All right, any discussion? Kevin, here, I'm, I'm just, uh.
I understand, chief. I, I'm glad you did the research. I appreciate you doing the research and something you did, uh, somebody out there that you trust and you talk with. Disappointed that we can't find, that the hybrid version will not work for us. I, I, and some of the sustainability is talked, committee has talked about several times, pushing our fleet more towards, uh, hybrids or, or electric vehicles. So I'm a little, uh, I'm a little disappointed in that. And, um, I'm not sure it's gonna rev you from voting yes, but I, I wish that we really could, could start pulling around.
And, and I agree. I, I think that's where we need to head in the future. I just wonder if it's just a little too early, and there's gotta be some, some modifications. You know, a regular car is so much different than a squad car. And, and just all the equipment we carry in there. And, and when we need it, it's gotta be able to go. Otherwise, we turn this into a liability issue for, for us as a department. And, you know, we have people that are carrying in there, officers. And it's just, maybe just a little more study than that we can maybe get to that in the future. But I agree, I agree with you, Kevin. I think that's the role to have, so.
All right, any other discussion? All right, roll call, both, please.
Trusty Xander. Trusty Pamkowski.
Yes.
Trusty Thucius.
Yes.
Trusty Kettleboulder.
Yes.
Trusty Francois.
Yes.
And President Leinfeld.
Yes.
Oh, actually, yeah. Sorry about that. Trusty Brosios.
Yes. All right, it passes. Okay, the next item is pedestrian crossing, rapid response, flashing beacon at Bourbon Road and Continental.
I like the motion that we approve the installation of flashing pedestrian-activated light system at the crosswalk at Bourbon and Continental as recommended by the Public Safety Committee.
Second.
Okay, our motion and second discussion. Judy.
Is there any way we can put off of here?
I mean, it's always possible. I got a question for the safety. Did we look, I mean, did we look at all the places that we could? My understanding, we should have one at Church Street at Evergreen, and that's not been put up yet, my understanding. We have it, but it weren't for the kids going to middle school. At that, my understanding, there's supposed to be one in there. We paid for it already. So that hasn't been put up. And then to me, while I do agree that Bourbon, uh, and Continental should get one eventually, I think there's a greater need for it to be at Mill Creek's Way and Highway fourteen by the car dealership and where the Ice Age Trail. I, yeah, I stopped there far more than any other crosswalk when I'm driving. And I've always seen that is one of the main entrances to Xander Park. So, you know, to me, I'm just wondering if the safety committee looked at all intersections or was this broad? Because people wanted one at that intersection. Or did we look at all the other intersections that might be a higher priority than that?
We did not look at higher priority. We looked at this intersection because it was an issue there. So, um, we, we didn't look at every area that could possibly need one. Here, it was more of a concern because of the traffic and it's dark at night. And I, because I almost hit a kid there because I didn't see him at night. Because of where the path and stuff comes up, there's, they're putting a new park in, and there's just no easy way for kids to get across. So that's why they're done, yeah.
And I can attest to that. We're making a lot of traffic stops there because there's people flying up and down that road. And, I mean, we have a flashing stop sign and they go already do that. So, I mean, we've made multiple stops at Halle Graham's and Bourbon High. We have some issues with the, with the various stuff. I think that was just brought up as a complaint until we dealt with it. But there's probably half a dozen locations where.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just wondering if it's wiser for the committee to actually build a priority list on which ones in what rank, and then we slowly get there. But I really think we need to put up the one on, uh, County P first. So I have Kevin and then Michael.
Oh, so, uh, the one on County P, I thought was paid for, but I don't know.
Yeah, I think it is.
I, I can speak to the one on, well, I think, first of all, about the one that proposed here, I do think it's a high need and really support putting one up there. The one on Main Street, though, Jay, when, when Main Street was redesigning, um, DOT, we had this discussion many times. That's where we wanted it. The Ice Age Trail Lines wanted to put one up there at those intersections we're talking about. They refused to because of emerging traffic there. And so they convinced us to put it down a block on.
Do they exist now?
So we, we, for the, so the Ice Age Trail, it used to cross there.
Right.
And then they did the redesign. We actually had to move it over a block and, and, and move the signs around because of the rapid flashing beacon. So I don't think, uh, West Dot or, I guess, the Federal Highway Commission would be interested in having one where you proposed.
Well, I'm not proposing. I'm just looking at intersections where I think, I see a lot of foot traffic. There's a ton of people that cross there. And, uh, Highway fourteen is far more dangerous than Bourbon Road.
Yeah, we just didn't get any, we haven't received any complaints.
But I'm sure, but I'm sure it's, it's an issue. Well, I'm just, the volume, there's fifteen thousand cars.
Right, but I think people are more aware that there are people out there. Where when you go on Bourbon Road, you know, the paths come out there. And I, I mean, it, you just don't notice anything on that road because it's kind of industrial, it's our commercial area. So I don't think you're anticipating seeing kids or adults crossing there as much as what they do. It, because it's a, you know, that subdivision there is crossing over to get also to the trail now. Because, I mean, that park is used a lot. And I think it's more than what anyone anticipated it would be used. So I think, you know, it's in the center and those roads around it, and people are speeding all over town.
The traffic goal is that Main Street, as everybody understands Main Street, they use Bourbon Road as a way to get around Main Street. And that's where, that's where we get into trouble because they're, they're thinking they can go faster to get around traffic and get out on the other end. It was really a problem.
And they're trying to, a lot of people I see use it to avoid the light. Like, if they live in the Gil's Way neighborhood, oh, I'll go this way, then I don't have to set up the light. Yeah, it's a, it's a workaround. And it's generally slow versus Main Street, which is kind of always happening. So you aren't necessarily prepared to see people.
Michael? I was just going to address, you were talking about the, the Church Street and, uh, the crossing for the school. I think that those are going in. It looked like they were putting in the rough start of concrete there and also down by where you live, Judy, at Valley and Church. Are they doing rapid flashing beacons there also built? I don't know if it's the same kind of concrete.
Yeah, I, I don't, I think there's only one on Church. Hey, Jerry, are you on?
Yep.
Can you answer the question in regards?
There will be two on Church Street. We got the basis forward last Thursday for them. They'll be getting put up next month. One is at the intersection of Church and Valley, and the other is at the intersection of Church and Bear, the school crossing there.
I just noticed that those are going in.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, Jerry.
With regards to this rapid flashing beacon, I would agree with Judy of pushing it back. I understand the possibility, but we can put up pedestrian crossing signs before we spend, um, thousands of dollars on this rapid flashing beacon here there. So as a different option.
Kevin?
Uh, you could also propose a stop sign.
That was proposed.
And?
I think this is instead of a stop sign, right?
Whoa, 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 hang on, hang on. I got Kevin, then Sarah, then Judy. So a stop sign where? Uh, at the corner of, uh, Continental and Bourbon. Okay. At the place of the flashing, I mean, it sounds like it's been analyzed, but I, I didn't hear the analysis, so.
Okay, so do you want to respond to Kevin, and then I'll go Sarah and Judy?
That wouldn't really be beneficial. Fire Department going through there, it just was. And, and all the statistics say that stop signs don't really work for controlling speed and pedestrian. And like I said, you have a flashing on a Halle Graham, beacon sit there all day and make traffic stops. People go right through that. We've probably had a dozen stops within the last month, just from people going through that. And you do have a lot of people using the park and you've got the daycareers, they come across, they use the park. So there's a lot of traffic both, both ways with a pedestrian bike. So, stop signs, we did talk about that and I don't know if that's gonna work. That beacon just seems to be more of a, you know, something where everybody would be comfortable using. And it seems like something that, that's been used in our village at a successful rate.
Okay, Sarah then Judy.
Oh, I, I guess I'm just in support and I don't really have anything more to add.
Judy?
He answered, he said exactly what I'm saying.
Okay, other discussion? Alright, let's have a roll call vote.
Trustee Francois.
Yes.
Trustee Xander.
Yes.
Trustee Pamukowski.
No.
Trustee Thucius.
Yes.
Trustee Kettleboulder.
No.
Trustee Brosius.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
No.
Motion carries for the three.
Alright.
Do you want to have a discussion on funding it?
No, I guess we kind of decide we're just gonna wait.
Okay.
That's, that's my understanding, we'll wait when we talk about borrowing, how much we need, if we have enough in the, whatever we have in the capital fund balance, we'll take off towards it.
Okay.
I'm okay with that logic.
Alright, replacement of the 2019 skid steer.
I'll make a motion that we approve the replacement of the 2019 skid steer.
Wait a second.
I second that.
Alright, I have a motion and a second to replace the 2019 skid steer. Open up for discussion.
Do you want any information from Jerry?
I'm asking anybody, I, I already talked to him about it, so.
Alrighty, let's do a roll call vote.
Trustee Brosius.
Yes.
Trustee Kettleboulder.
Yes.
Trustee Thucius.
Yes.
Trustee Pamukowski.
Yes.
Trustee Xander.
Yes.
And Trustee Francois.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes.
Alright, so move. Alright, we'll go to the 2021 annual street resurfacing.
Just a quick comment, you don't have to use your mics anymore, they're not working because the program's not working. Heard you guys clicking, so.
It's awfully fun, Joe.
Yeah, we can do it.
Alright, do I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve the annual street resurfacing for 2021.
Wait a second.
I'll second.
Alright, so open up for discussion. The one thing I will comment on, I don't think we're in a good position to put money from the operation, I know that is one of the things our goals were to move this into operation. I would ask that at least on, if we get an increase in transportation aid, it increase go towards the, this hundred thousand. That would be what I would propose on, I don't know, we talked about this. Go ahead Kevin.
I'm, I'm just asking, can you explain that a little bit Jay, I think the number is like 320 or something like that?
It's 300, I think last year it was 317 if I remember.
So you're saying that the village would put in a hundred and then?
No, 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 that, that has always been
Yes.
eaten up in the operation budget, none of that goes towards this. So what I'm saying is, let's say it goes up to 357,000. That increase of 40,000 would go towards the hundred thousand. Instead of having it eaten up in the regular operation, it would actually go towards the streets. That's what I'm proposing. Because if you remember last year, we were talking about taking the increase from transportation aid and then some and we'll be shifting some over to operations, so eventually it's all in operation versus borrowing. What I'm saying is, let's hold off because I don't think we're in a good position to do any more out of the tax levy, but let's still move any addition in transportation aid to that, and I think that number comes out in October, I thought I saw something October 9th or something.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm, that's what I'm suggesting. Bill?
So, one of the things that we talked about, and I don't know where this discussion went, but we were talking about identifying where all that money goes. And we have speculation where it goes, but we don't know really where it goes because there's no accountability for it and I would like to see more accountability in where that money specifically goes, I know it goes in the general but, and it gets used for growing, it's used for salaries, it gets used for this and that, I get it. But, I would like to see more where that actually goes, because then we, we know where that money is being used and how we can spend it better.
Well, I, I think the time to do it is, we're gonna be, we're ending up getting the operation budget tonight and we'll discuss it in September, I think that's one of the things, certainly is a reasonable ask, is let's break down where they're budgeting transportation aid.
So, great, so we can do that, that was part of the discussion, yes.
So just a disclosure here, so in your, your budgets, your operation budgets currently, we do have the $20,000 in transportation aid, you'll see that in your capital improvement budget as a revenue going into capital improvement, so. Again.
Yeah, I know, yeah, this is a preliminary and
Yep.
but I just don't think this is the year to pull 20,000 in operations costs into growth. I do believe any increase in transportation aid should go against that hundred thousand.
Kevin, in genuine proposal one time, at least we talked about some different ideas to fund the street resurfacing. Obviously, you know, operation would be one of them, but there were some other ideas too. None of those arguments were proposed before 2021. Are we still gonna look at other options in 2021 or 2022?
Yes, we are, I, part of the, so, just so I'm a little off, the finance subcommittee, we are going to recommend a citizens committee that one of their tasks would be to look at wheel tax, there's now a transportation fee you can charge in new, for new development. There's some options out there, it's just that nobody really has done the research, but we're certainly, in my opinion, I am planning that we'll have a group that will, kind of like the sustainability committee, will have some type of a financial planning type committee that would look into those other revenue sources. And maybe do a survey and everything to see what the residents feel about that. But yes, it has been lost since our last discussion, but clearly, at least on my agenda, I still want to be looking at that for future.
The only reason I asked now is if we could take steps in that direction, it doesn't sound like we need to in this budget.
No, I, yeah, I mean, we, I mean, obviously with the wheel tax, I think there's a 90-day difference in it, but you can do it at any time, but, no, we did not build any revenue from a wheel tax. I think it's way too mature, premature to talk about that right now, but it's certainly that something should be looked at.
Alright, any other discussion? Alright, let's do a roll call vote then.
Okay, Trustee Pamukowski.
Yes.
Trustee Thucius.
Could you read the motion?
The motion is just to approve the annual street resurfacing, a hundred thousand.
But you had mentioned though Jay.
I was gonna do that, it says a separate.
Separate, okay.
Yeah. Yes.
Trustee Kettleboulder.
Yes.
Trustee Brosius.
Yes.
Trustee Francois.
Yes.
Trustee Xander.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes. And then, I'd like to have a motion that any increase in transportation aid would go to offset a hundred thousand for street resurfacing line item. Wait a second.
I'll second that.
Alright, any discussion on that?
Any transportation aid can go down?
Yeah. Well, there we go. It, it, it's possible, but I, the indication that we got this year, it didn't show that. But it's, you know, I guess, I think it's possible in 2022 where the budget is, you know, the state's always a two-year budget, so.
So I guess my point is, if it, if it does go, do we need to address it going down or not, or just the whole, the whole amount?
My whole thing was any increase, so if it goes down, then obviously nothing's gonna go forward to.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All a poll the same? Go move. Alright. We have phosphorus chemical polishing. Just so everybody's aware, if you remember, we had to meet phosphorus limits. We ended up paying a farmer not to farm. The numbers came in much better, so we didn't have to do that, but we have to treat the, the water going into the crypt for phosphorus. And we're, because the numbers are low enough, we'll be able to do that with chemicals. This is coming out of the Equipment Replacement Fund. That is extremely healthy, so there shouldn't be a concern with the funding on this one. And quite frankly, it's a mandate. So do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the phosphorus chemical polishing, which is a hundred thousand.
I have a.
That's it.
Okay, any discussion? If you roll call vote.
Trustee Thucius.
Yes.
Trustee Pamukowski.
Yes.
Trustee Xander.
Yes.
Trustee Francois.
Yes.
Trustee Brosius.
Yes.
Trustee Kettleboulder.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes.
Alright, next one is the SCAD system upgrade. Again, this is coming from the Equipment Replacement Fund. And it kind of ties into what will be happening with, when the, with the water system there related. Do I have a motion?
I'd love to approve the SCAD equipment and software replacement.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, any discussion? So, Michael, I got Michael then Bill.
So this is just a line item for 200,000 dollars, but we aren't really sure what that is depending on what we decide to do with the water system and wells and if we keep well one and et cetera, it'll all kind of change with that, right?
No, this is gonna happen no matter what, this is the computer and the software that runs these systems.
This one is on the sewer side.
Oh, this is on the sewer side, oh, okay. Some, you know, some source side.
Bill?
So.
Oh, there it is.
So this is a, so this, I, I, I just need clarification of it. What's failing and obsolete, I don't?
Jerry, are you on the line?
Yeah, I'm here, I couldn't hear Bill's question.
He, he's, he's asking what of the SCADA system on the sewer side is failing or obsolete? And why we need the upgrade?
Okay, the SCADA system is one system that operates both water and sewer. Outlying plant and wells, sewer plant, lift stations. The current software is running out of support. That will end, actually, next year. There will be no more support for it. We also have some equipment that needs to be upgraded. The newest stuff we have in the SCADA system dates to 2005. So I, I think we've done quite well to get it to last 15, well over 15 years. And it's, it's just run its course, it's done.
Thanks Jerry. Any other questions or discussions? Alright, roll call vote please.
Trustee Kettleboulder.
Yes.
Trustee Brosius.
Yes.
Trustee Francois.
Uh, yes.
Trustee Xander.
Yes.
Trustee Pamukowski.
Yes.
Trustee Thucius.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes. Alright, the next one is a inflow infiltration study. This is due to the clear water that's going into our sewer system, if you remember last month, Jerry briefed us and we ended up getting a C, otherwise we had straight As. So what this does is, is going to try to figure out where that water's coming from, so we can reduce it from flowing into our system.
Do I have a motion?
I motion to fund the inflow infiltration study.
Wait a second.
I'll second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second to approve the study. Any discussion? Bill?
So, I know we get straight As, but what is the repercussion of us getting a C and keeping a C?
Jerry, did you hear that?
Yeah, I, yes, I did, okay. The repercussion is, and I can live with a C, hell, I went through quite a few years of school with being very happy when I got Cs. But, there are financial factors that play into this. Every gallon of water that we have to pump at the sewer plant or at the lift station that is clear water, something we shouldn't have to pump, all that translates into electrical usage. Running it through the plant, the various treatment steps, that all trans, transfers into electrical usage. And then it also contributes to our bio solids generated, the whole volume that's generated. Which that brings the bill up from, that we get from Dade, Iowa when we haul our bio solids down there. So. Yes, it would be nice to have straight As. I'm not really pushing this project from that standpoint. We have financial impact, pumps wear out faster because they're running more. Electric bill, month after month, is higher. Oh, I should have a whole list, I do, but I can't say them right now. But at, at any rate, the the net result is that the, the money spent on this study could be recouped within a very short time through equipment wear, electric bill. If we can find out where the water is coming from and then get it abated.
Great, Jerry.
Well Jerry, let me ask you something, if it goes down to a D, then what happens?
Then it becomes mandatory, the DNR. Then it becomes mandatory, the DNR mandates that you, uh, initiate a program to deal with it.
Okay, thank you.
Right now, we're still in the recommendation stage.
Sure, I have Kevin. Uh, Jerry, I, I'm sure you can't answer the first part of this question, but try if you may. Uh, what is, how, how certain are you that they're going to find the problem? And then I guess, secondly, um, not knowing what the problem is, so you may not answer this either. Uh, there's also gonna be a cost to fix the problem. So it's not just the fifty thousand, it's gonna be some other cost too, and it could be tens or hundreds of thousands. Um, any, any idea at all on those two questions?
Um, yes, we will find where water's coming from. Um, uh, we did one of these, uh, ninety-eight prior to the first sewer plant rehab that I was part of here. And we found quite a few areas where there were storm sewers tied into the sanitary sewer, things like that. Um, most of those were addressed or have been addressed over the years. Uh, it's now time to do a ref, you know, kind of check your work type of thing and see what new scenarios are out there. Um, you know, one of the things we did was, uh, we switched all the homes along Highway fourteen, uh, between Highway fourteen and the creek, we switched them over to, uh, Main Street Sewer Line and tried to get rid of all of that Lagoon Street Line. There are still a couple of short sections that still exist, one down by Monk's old building that, due to extenuating circumstances, we could not just simply abandon it. Uh, places like that need to be checked. And the second part of your question is, yes, there will be a cost associated with fixing things. Until we do this study to see what we're working with, uh, we can't really put a number on the second question, Kevin. But that would be, uh, a product of the study.
Thanks, Jerry, 'cause your answering the first question gave me more assurances than I thought you, than I thought you had. I, I, I wasn't a hundred percent, or I wasn't overly confident of finding the answer, I'm glad you sound confident.
Michael?
Just, so, when, when you, I don't know, when it says clear water, does that mean rainwater? And then I guess my second question is, is how does that contribute to our bio solids?
Okay, I heard the first part of Michael's question, I didn't hear the second.
The second part was, how does it contribute to the bio solids?
Um, the, the clear water is typically groundwater that's getting in through, um, broken pipes, mismatched joints. Um, there are incidences where it is directly to rainwater, I think we have most of those addressed though. That would be scenarios like I talked about with Kevin's question, where a storm sewer was hooked to the sanitary sewer. Um, the, the volume of water is directly proportional to the amount of solids that are generated at the wastewater treatment plant. When the water gets to the sewer plant, whether it's got poop in it, or if it's clear as a bell, you could drink it. It doesn't matter, it all gets mixed together. And through the process of treating the wastewater, the, the volume of water is directly proportional to the amount of solids produced.
I, I guess for the group, my opinion is, I'd rather find where the problem is now and give us time and plan for fixing it than all of a sudden it be get, becoming worse and then we're mandated and then we're forced to spend a lot of money in a short period of time. So I, I think this is to solve the problem, but it's also to prevent, uh, future financial problems. I think if we identify, even if we stretch it out, if it gets a little worse, I think we have something to show the DNR.
So we, we also have placeholders in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three for the repair. Had two hundred thousand dollars each year, but we don't know until that study what that cost will be.
And, and the, those numbers, yeah, they were placeholders, as Bill said. But like Jay says, they don't have to be done as long as we're still under the recommendation stage. We get a D or an F and we fall into the mandate, then, then we will be spending money. Right now, we have the, the local, you guys, the board, has the discretion. Do we wanna spend a hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty-one? Or do we wanna put it off till twenty twenty-two? Things like that.
All right, thank you, Jerry. Any other discussion? Roll call hold please.
Trustee Broceus.
Yes.
Trustee Francois.
Yes.
Trustee Kettleb, excuse me, trustee Xander.
Yes.
Trustee Pamakowski.
Yes.
Trustee Thucius.
Yes.
Trustee Kettleboulder.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes. Okay, we're at, uh, well, three construction and SCADA upgrade. Now, I, I kinda wanna correct this, it, um, cause there is correction, it's not actually two point three million we're looking at for twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-one, uh, last I got from people would be about six hundred and fifty. Um, and that would be the well part, that the house would be put into twenty twenty-two. Now, there would be, uh, the six hundred and fifty roughly would be a bridge loan. And then we would put it all into, uh, once the bids come in for the house, the well house, then we put it all into the clean water loan. So that's kinda how it would work, it's a, a little deceiving to say the two point three million, um, that is not the case. I mean, eventually we could get to that, but.
So you split it over twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, depending on when the financing comes in?
Right. So I just wanna make sure when you're looking at that, it, it, it's a huge number, but that, that number would be closer to about six hundred and fifty. I'll make the motion that we approve, uh, the financing for well three constructions SCADA upgrade. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the construction of well three and the SCADA upgrade. Discussion. Bill?
So, two line items above, we just approved the SCADA system upgrade? So why is this different?
This is water, the other one was for the sewer part.
Oh, I see that, I got it, got it, got it. Never mind. Why I thought Jerry said that was water and sewer?
He did.
Well, they talk, it's the same system, but the water pays for the water part of it, the sewer pays for the sewer part.
Right.
So they work together, it's like a computer, you have one for, for water and one for sewer, and they're connected to a third one. They're each paying for their own computer, their portion of the metal.
So that two hundred thou, so, so basically it's four hundred thousand for the SCADA upgrade?
Correct.
Yes, right?
Correct.
And so all of that, so that two hundred of, so two hundred is coming out of the six fifty that you're saying, so four fifty is gonna be other stuff for the well, right?
Oh, no, the six fifty, the six fifty here is just for the, the, the well. When they do, when they do the, the building, that will have the SCADA upgrade in it, I believe. Is that correct, Jerry?
Yes, the, the SCADA will be upgraded. Well, it, it's gonna include work at the existing wells, the reservoirs, uh, the new well, and then the, the base, the, the main computers at the village shop and the sewer plant.
So, so that two hundred, so basically we're gonna pay four hundred thousand dollars next year for the upgrade, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Two hundred for water, two hundred for sewer.
Okay, plus the six fifty for what, Jerry, with, with Jason?
Correct.
So was it eight fifty then?
Jerry, when does that SCADA upgrade need to hap, does that have to happen the same time as sewer? Or do we want that to happen at the, the time of the wellhouse? I guess it, it depends on how you, you bid it, right?
We, we're gonna have, or we, we have the potential for epic failure, um, after the first of the year because we're losing support on the system we have. Uh, we're also gonna have the new lift station coming online, uh, with the, uh, Sealy Valley subdivision, and we'll need the SCADA system upgraded to run that as well. So I anticipate all of the SCADA system except the actual stuff in wellhouse number three to be completed in twenty-one and then wrap up the project in twenty-two when, uh, wellhouse at well number three is completed.
Kevin? Could, could somebody, uh, tell me what the number that is in twenty-one then? Because we've been, I, two point, it's not two point three million, and that's what's on here, so.
Yeah.
And there's nothing in twenty twenty-two budget with, for wellhouse three, or well three. So I'm, I guess I'm just wondering what we're approving here for twenty-one.
Well, the reason it's not is because it's all in here, but, um, I don't, I, the, the problem is we're painted in pieces, like, we're already, we're already, earlier today, we approved for that test well, right? And we're gonna put that all back and then we also did, um, I don't know, what other work that we've done, some engineering work.
Engineering, yeah.
You know, planning, so, you know, this is like a three-year project, right? So it, it's really gonna be difficult to know on the timing. We're going to apply for eligibility for the Clean Water Act, if I remember, is June. That's when we have to have the paperwork in and we can do it. I, you know, it's gonna be tied to what they find, I, I just, I can just, when I, when I looked at this, that was my first thing. This is not all gonna be in twenty twenty-one. When I got back from Brian, was it was about six hundred and fifty for twenty twenty-one, and then the rest of it would be in twenty twenty-two.
So, and that sounds fine, but I just wanna make sure, I, I just wanna know what I'm, when I'm voting on what we vote is if we're approving up to a certain amount, if we're approving sixty-five, or we're approving two point three million over the next, so I just, we, we.
I, I don't, I don't know if I can give you the, the exact number, I mean, the exact number of the project is two point three, let's just say. What, what I would think we wanna do is approve the project, and then we have to wait to see when bids come in. Cause even if we say, uh, six hundred and fifty thousand, the bids come in at five hundred and fifty, we're not gonna do six hundred and fifty, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So I think we have to do the project, I can tell you it's expensive, it's gonna be probably around, let's say, eight hundred and fifty thousand that we'll borrow, but we won't really know until we get closer. So I think tonight what we're doing is looking to move forward in the building of the well.
And we'll, another point, we'll approve the amount.
Oh, absolutely, I mean, we're gonna have to, because we don't know what we're gonna borrow yet.
I guess, yeah, so I guess that's, that's where I'm getting at here is, uh, so we should just approve the project, I don't think, I, I don't, without the number, because did our, what was the motion?
The motion was to approve funding for well three, construction of well three and SCADA upgrade.
There was no number on it?
Right, we didn't.
Okay, good.
Yeah, the only one we placed, yeah. You there?
No, no, I the pastor, so I did say.
Yeah, there's a couple times we put numbers.
Yeah.
This one and this one, okay.
I think this one's just really too difficult, we're gonna get a lot of debate on it.
Great.
And it's, I'm, I'm even, and I've been involved, I get confused where the money is being tied into what's all included. All right, any other discussion? All right, roll call hold please.
Trustee Francois.
Yes.
Trustee Xander.
Yes.
Trustee Pamakowski.
Yes.
Trustee Thucius.
Yes.
Trustee Kettleboulder.
Yes.
Trustee Broceus.
Yes.
President Langfeld.
Yes. All right, the last item that did not pass the fire district, so that can be moved, you don't need to take any action. All right, so we are going to go on to the twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five, and we're not gonna go from each one. If you have a question on any of them for staff, you know, you can ask it, but again, I think, I just don't wanna spend a whole lot of time because there's too much uncertainty. Um, we have things planned out here, so if you have questions for any of the department heads, uh, go ahead and, uh, ask away. Um, it's just that there's a lot up here that just is unknown if it's actually gonna happen.
Or even need to happen.
Bill?
So, the only one I've really got for parts is the Flares GDM electric utility vehicle based off of, um, you know, what's going on with COVID this year, maybe next year, is that something that can be put off to another year or two?
I guess if it's just based off of COVID, I'd like to wait and see, uh, but, yeah, I mean, I, I think we can discuss those things as they come. I'd like to keep them on the back here if possible for next year, and then we'll be in that same position, I think we can talk about them. I hate to base it off of uncertainties, uh, due to, I know.
And that's kinda my feel too, I, I was willing to leave everything on here and then we'll just see what really happens because there's just so much unknown.
Yeah, I, I would just like to say that I appreciate the staff looking out.
Five years.
Oh, absolutely. And I think this is helpful for all of us, um, to plan and I, give their guesses a bit. But at least we all can look at this and the public can look at this and see what's coming down the pipe and make comments. So I, I appreciate you all looking out, it's, every year it seems like we get a little better at this.
Yep, I agree, I think it's, but it's just, again, it's the circumstances of where we are right now. So, is there any action, Bill, you want with?
Yeah, we, we should approve the plan, cause it is just that, a plan, uh, beyond twenty twenty-one. Um, so that, you know, what then we'll all do is I'll take this worksheet and put it into a readable format for everyone, like what we've done in the past, but I, I'd like to get a, uh, action on that.
All right, uh, I will make a motion to approve the proposed twenty twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty twenty-five capital improvement plan.
Okay.
Okay, uh, did you want twenty twenty-one included since we went?
Yeah, it's the whole plan.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? Do you, can, can, uh, my only concern is we're contradicting because we, the fire rapid response vehicle that was in twenty twenty-one is probably gonna be moved to twenty twenty-two, so it's not, I'm worried if we approve this, that means we're approving it.
Well, you, you, you guys moved, you moved it during the discussion, so the, the new plan will reflect if they moved.
All right, I just wanna make sure.
Specifically, it didn't say as, as presented.
Okay, very good. Just wanted to make sure that there isn't a conflict there.
There was, one other change that was on, there was ten thousand four hundred for the, it was a job.
And I don't know if it really matters, but when you were taking notes on number one, you were issuing two notes for the fifth. It was Mike and Bill, and I think it's the most important. When we counted, there was only two notes.
Yeah, I have, I have Bill and Michael.
Yep.
You, you said four to three.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry about that. Okay, sorry, sorry about that.
All right, I have um, motion and a second. Uh, any other discussion? All in, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same, so move. All right, very good. Make sure uh, staff gets a big thank you for going through this, appreciate it. It was a lot of work. All right, next one is your preliminary twenty twenty-one, those across planes. Operating budget is on your table. Uh, this will be discussed at the next uh, meeting. So please review it. If you have questions, if you can email them to the department head. So if they feel that it needs to come, the answer needs to come to all of us. It's much easier than seven of us emailing the exact same question.
So just quickly, you'll see our transmitter lot are in there, uh, in memo format from me. You all recognize that the budget worksheets look a little bit different this year. Uh, we try to cut out as, as much as possible, yet make, make sure that we still keep information, crucial information in there. We've also, you'll see also that uh, the way that we're budgeting now is we're providing a, a base budget. And then we have supplemental items pulled out. And we have memos in regards to those, so those are the large ticket items that will, could potentially impact the budget in a levy amount. Uh, if you have any questions about how to read any of those documents or how to get through them, do let me know. Um, so I, Bobby and I can answer any questions that you may have.
All righty, so, future agenda item. Does anybody have future agenda items you'd like to put? Uh, Kevin, Judy?
Sorry, um, I just wanted to make sure, that's the second time I've heard from the, uh, resident, that, that by Schultz, I think it was, about the Uelia Corp. And I saw her go, if, if, if we don't have a plan, I'd like to see that on our agenda, unless that's going to be addressed somewhere else.
I would lo- I believe that should start at the public safety.
Okay, agreed. I just want to make sure that happened. I don't want this, it was supposed to happen last time, I don't think it did, so.
Oh, okay, so.
This was about a year, year and a half ago, I didn't see the meeting.
Okay, you can put that on your agenda, Lori, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Judy?
I'm just wondering, would I bring back the chamber then after I talk to him on Wednesday, and then we'll bring it back next time?
Correct. You'll come here, get into Bill ahead of time, so we have, yeah, but that, that one will stay at the board, so.
Yeah, I, I'd want to know what happened, so we could come up with resolutions.
Yeah, and we agree that we'll put that on next agenda. The same thing with uh, volunteer funds for EMS and fire. I will uh, rattle Matt's page so we can get that done. All right, anything else?
Do we, oh, do we start with election stuff coming up, or who else required there?
For the most part, we're, we're good to go. Uh, we're waiting to see uh, what happens from uh, some court cases that are still lingering out there. But otherwise, it's, it's a matter of learning supplies and equipment to make it a better experience here.
All righty, we, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make a motion to go into closed session. I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Francois?
Yes.
Trustee Xander?
Yes.
Trustee Pamkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Thucius?
Yes.
Trustee Kettleboulder?
Yes.
Trustee Brosius?
Yes.
President Langfeld?
Yes.
Okay, we are now in closed session.
We are. Oh, no, we need a motion to go back into close. I'm sorry, I thought you were asking a motion on.
Oh, no, so, I mean, motion to go back into closed session.
All right, do I have a second? All right, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Uh, trustee Brosius?
Yes.
Trustee Kettleboulder?
Yes.
Trustee Thucius?
Yes.
Trustee Pamkowski?
Yes.
Trustee Xander?
Yes.
Trustee Francois?
Yes.
President Langfeld?
Yes.
All right, we're back. Open the door and see we're open, yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, we gotta wait, wait till we're open, so, okay. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good meeting.